House matters just because some of you are new to a town board meeting, so it's always great to have you and we welcome you back anytime you want. If you need a restroom, it's out these doors to the left in the back, this back corner of the building. Can't get through these doors, they're, they have locks, so you can't come back for us, you gotta use that door back there. But also, as you know, the emergency exits are in the back of the room as well. You don't want to go run out this if there's a fire, because all you're gonna do is run to the part of the building without an outdoor door, you don't want to do that. With that, we're gonna have 12 people who signed up tonight. I know there's some arbitrary rule back in the day that we only take 10. We haven't held to that with this topic, which most people are coming to talk about tonight, because we want to make sure everybody had a chance to speak. And as we've talked about as a board, if you take the time out of your life to come to this building, the least we could do is, you know, hear whatever it is on your mind. And so certainly, we're gonna let everybody speak that signed up, okay? And with that, we're gonna start off with Ms. Donna Jones. If you would, Donna, just everybody, you get three minutes, and if you would just say your name and your address, okay? Appreciate it. And if it's one more, Donna, I apologize. Instead of reading this whole screen, it just says, "Just be nice to us and we're gonna be nice to you," okay? All right, thank you, Donna.
Donna Jones, 668 Patterson Farm Road. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Gonna try to go as quickly as I can. As others will discuss the negative impact of the data center, I want to circle back to the decision standards and annexation certificate of sufficiency. The decision standards for this project did not accurately depict the impact on our area, and some appear to have been taken out of context from one Mooresville. The planning board moved to recommend approving this project based on these decision standards. How can this go farther in the approval process when inaccurate information was presented? Here are some concerns. The project does not aid in the infill and redevelopment of Mooresville. In fact, after burdens during decades of construction and use, there will be five 30 million cubic foot buildings that are no longer needed. This creates a huge area of needed redevelopment and demolition. It is an enormous opportunity cost. The project does not support flex use despite the conditional zoning title. This is a fenced-in private property that will have a data center and related energy storage, not the intended use of flex industrial, flex commercial uses. There's no way to hide this project behind a buffer of trees, especially only 100 feet of them. And the residents on Rustic Road will have a full view of the entire data center project because of the topography. While those of us on Patterson Farm Road and Archer Road will have significant view as well. This project is not compatible with existing land use or any other proposed uses in our residential area. In fact, it is being dropped in the middle of our residential area in a very detrimental spot-like zoning fashion. It is not a logical and orderly developmental pattern, as we are in a residential area with no nearby industrial zoning. The land is currently a residential agricultural zoned area with future land use being agricultural rural conservation tier two. There has yet to be any critical or modern infrastructure defined other than an extension of water and sewer. Also, knowing that this parcel of land is being given subsurface rights, the town will essentially be handing control of our county residential water to the data center, which is unthinkable, especially during drought conditions. Mayor Kearney mentioned that the wastewater treatment plant may also be an issue. Both of these are required for annexation. There are no sidewalks, playgrounds, no criminal prevention unless the end user agrees to employ officers for the decades of this project and until the last of the five 30 million cubic foot buildings is gone. Demolition's costs are over 10 times land value gearing it up for decades of abandonment and criminal activity. I also question whether the number of fire departments in the area is sufficient to handle an out-of-control fire in a 30 million cubic foot data center building, especially given the location and the unique training skill sets that are required. Both are required for annexation. We also know that electrical isn't available for many data centers, including the one on Highway 16. That's why it's sitting abandoned, sitting without construction. Senate Bill 266 just passed the fuel costs from industries to residents in a time when data centers are being built and a huge amount of electricity is being used. There will also be costs for residents for added power. The data center stays, if a data center stays on a single floor-
Donna, go ahead and wrap it up, okay, because we're gonna get everybody, okay?
Okay, well, it'll use as much as 150 to 200,000 homes.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Lynn Taylor? Lynn? There you are. It would've been more fun if we told you to come on down, wouldn't it? Lynn, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, as stated, my name is Lynn Taylor, I am a resident of Mooresville for over 20 years. Data centers rely on nearby power plants and diesel generators to ensure that there's a constant electricity flow running to these centers. In the 2024 study, the Washington State Department of Ecology noted that the negative health consequences stemming from data centers comes from diesel exhaust and nitrous oxide. Both pollutants are known for causing lung and heart diseases, as well as carrying an increased risk for cancer. As noted by Han, Wu, Lee, Weirman, and Ren in this 2024 study, data centers will contribute to over 600,000 asthma cases and 1,300 premature deaths due to asthma alone. Now, the authors also found that the public health cost would blossom to over $20 billion by 2030. Now, here in North Carolina, the Department of Health and Human Services has already noted higher incidences, excuse me, of thyroid cancer, especially in our teens, in the 28115 and 28117 zip codes, likely believed to be caused by the coal-powered steam and nuclear power station at Lake Norman. Now, given the well-documented health risks associated with the data centers and coupled with the already increased incidences of cancer in our community, what is our town board and the tech company going to do to ensure that Mooresville and our surrounding areas do not face higher rates of asthma, COPD, heart disease, and cancer? Our health does not need to be sacrificed for the sake of a dollar. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. All right. Ms. Carrie Pennell. Nice. We're glad to see you survived Disney, so welcome back.
Thank you so much. Carrie Pennell, 589 Patterson Farm Road, I'm gonna apologize in advance for not making eye contact. I am gonna read this, because I have a short amount of time, so. If you're in opposition to this project, please raise your hand. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I regret that I will not be able to stay for the entirety of the meeting. I will be watching the discussion online. As this is one of only two remaining opportunities for the public to speak on this matter, it's important we take full advantage of it. At the heart of this issue is a question of foresight and responsibility. If the city extends water and sewer infrastructure to this tract, it will not end there. Hundreds of surrounding acres will immediately become prime targets for future high-density development, whether that be sprawling subdivisions or industrial operations. We all understand that growth is coming to Southern Iredale County, but what the people are asking for and what this moment requires is responsible growth. Growth that respects the land, honors the character, and doesn't leapfrog ahead of services and systems needed to sustain it. Patterson Farm Road is one of the last remaining areas of true residential character in our county. Don't erase that with premature decisions that we all know cannot be undone. For once, allow the land to be used by right, as it is, and preserve what so many in this community value: open space, clean water, safe and manageable roads, and a future that remains balanced and thoughtful. We would be remiss not to mention the behavior and approach of the developer tract. From the beginning, their attitude has been dismissive and disrespectful to both the residents and the process. Their posture has been clear: take our money or walk away. Vague promises have replaced meaningful answers. Their contempt for residents who voice legitimate concerns has been obvious in every single interaction. That's not how you build trust or a future in a community like this. The public has waited long enough, the community deserves a clear answer. No more procedural limbo or behind-the-scenes maneuvering. What independent research has been conducted? What, if any, questions have you asked? Why was this entire proposal discussed in backrooms far in advance of the public even knowing? Let's be clear, this project was well in motion before residents ever caught wind of it, and it's only because of the strength and unity of this community, people stepping up, or just a few months ago, that we've slowed the rush to rubber stamp this approval. Our neighbors have worked tirelessly to demand transparency, accountability, and answers. We're proud of that, and we vow we will never again allow a project of this scale to move this far behind closed doors without being challenged. This entire mess could have been avoided with honesty and transparency from the start. Instead, we've been handed a developer's dream and asked to swallow it as our new reality. You have a clear choice: honor the people who live here or side with vague promises and veiled plans. Say no to this rezoning and annexation request. Let us plan first, not react later. Let us lead with integrity and not regret.
Next is Chris Wilkinson. Chris?
Chris? Hello, Chris Wilkinson, 349 Patterson Farm Road, along with a lot of other people that don't like public speaking, such as myself. A couple things, I'll try to be quick. I've sent several emails, you know, asking for updates, you know, where are we at on this? You know, the last meeting we had in here, we were setting a V-pattern, and one of the decisions was, well, we can't move forward with adding this to the agenda, because we don't know enough yet. I haven't heard anything else, nobody in this room has heard anything else. So what new data would cause us to even add this to today's agenda, to schedule it for the future, when we still don't know anything new? If there's new data, what is it and where is it? You know, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your comments on the Facebook post a couple days ago, you may have regretted that, but, you know, a few people have responded to that. But, you know, that said, you know, on Facebook, your campaign promises was nothing behind closed doors. You know, you were standing in Josh's Farmers Market, you know, a few years ago about that. What is the data? There's been nothing since. Thank you, Mr. West, you're the only response I've received of, you know, in my ask for questioning of, where are we at? Is there any data? Where does anything stand? Has Tract provided any information? You know, if not, how can we add this to the schedule yet, when there's still no information? And that was the whole reason for postponing last time, was not enough information. You know, a couple of biggest concerns is, and I'm using a quote from their presentation in the last work group, was, "Speed attracts customers." That's their selling point. Tract's entire job is to cut through the red tape, to get through your process so that, you know, Microsoft or Google or whomever big, you know, shiny object is gonna be here doesn't have to sit in this room with us. But they aren't the end user. We don't know who that end user is or what their demands are or aren't. Tract, when he stood up there, he did say, "They themselves," whomever the customer may be, "may ask for tax breaks." We don't know what that is or isn't yet. The topography's already been mentioned, but, you know, it's one of the higher areas in this, you know, part of the country, you know, or that part of the, you know, area. You know, a couple of the commissioners took my offer up to come visit and look at the property lines, and it is very high in there. The buffer that they've promised has already been cut. Look at Google Maps, you can see it, I've got the, you know, thing, so the buffer's being, the buffer's not there to leave, it's already been cut and cleared. And I can send that to anybody who wants it, I have those showing it. 120 generators with 30 minutes of runtime a month for testing comes out to be 60 hours of generator runtime a month, up on top of that hill to, you know, as they said on Rustic, they're gonna see it from, you know, from their house. The no corridor has been said, you know, multiple times, but the last bullet on their slide in the last meeting is aimed at attracting more in future business. So, you know, it doesn't align, when they give one promise to try to sound good and, you know, this isn't gonna bring more, but what is city water and sewer gonna do to every single field between DEI and there? Those fields are gonna start filling up with every other developer that then comes in on the coattails of Tract to try to go further, so. I think we need, we don't have enough information for us as neighbors and everybody that raised their hands to deal with this as a future potential neighbor.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate it. Darren Jones. Darren Jones. Hey Darren, how are you? See you again, man. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Kearney, Commissioners, thanks for your time tonight, Darren Jones, 668 Patterson Farm Road. So when I think about living in Mooresville, one of the things I think about are three of my favorite stores. And the first one is D.E. Turner. I was just there on Saturday. And you know anything in that store you could buy at a big box store, you could buy online, but I don't. I know if Danny stocks it there, I'm gonna go there and buy it. Why is that? Because it's iconic Mooresville, it's mom and pop. The second store is Shop 'n Save. And between Patterson Farm Road and Shop 'n Save, I probably pass six stores that sell meat, six stores that sell diesel fuel, but I go there, because it's a hometown market, it's mom and pop. The third one, and I have to reveal a secret to my wife here, is that when I go to buy her flowers, I drive past about a dozen options all the way to the other side of town in Josh's Farmers Market, they have really great flowers there. Why is that? One, because she does like them, but two, it's mom and pop, that's our hometown market. If you could personify a community as a store, Patterson Farm Road is D.E. Turner, Shop 'n Save, and Josh's Farmers Market. So with that being said, would it make sense to approve a Home Depot in the parking lot behind D.E. Turner? Right. Notice, I didn't say Lowe's, I don't want to step on any toes here. But would we approve a Home Depot behind D.E. Turner?
We wouldn't approve a Home Depot anywhere, so, just to be fair.
Okay. But would we approve a Buc-Ee's next to Shop 'n Save? It wouldn't make sense. And by the way, if you do, and I don't recommend it, but if you do, there's a vacated data center about a block up the road, you could probably put it there, but. Anyway, would we put a data center on Patterson Farm Road? If we wouldn't do those other things, would we put a data center on Patterson Farm Road? I'm not anti-data center. In fact, I make my living with data centers, I mentioned that last time I was up here. I'm just anti-data center where they don't belong, and they don't belong there. I would love to have a two-minute commute to work over the hour drive that I have today, but I'll stand on principle over personal gain to say that Patterson Farm Road is not the place for a data center. Thanks for your time.
Appreciate you, man. Thanks, Lynn. Ms. Renee Earnhardt. Renee? Renee, thanks for coming out tonight, we appreciate you.
Renee Earnhardt, 445 Patterson Farm Road, Mooresville, North Carolina, 28115. Good evening, as always, thank you all for the opportunity, and thank you for the June Public Work Session. We'll open up with a quote from Graham Williams, a representative for Tract, as stated and quoted. "We're in a world of more demand than supply." And I'll have to say, I agree with him on that. But here's the reality, you think the supply is low now? I can't even fathom the mass destruction from data centers another 10 to 20 years, 40 years down the road. Aggregators in Virginia, Georgia, Arizona, Colorado, Texas, Nevada, North Carolina, and I'm sure there's more locations, they're popping up everywhere, and the glory is not making any more of the things that they are demanding, and in due time, the supplies will run out. There has to be a more efficient process to data centers. The reality of the topics, the discussions, the words we're putting together to form sentences is mind-boggling. 500,000 gallons of water per day, the emissions of 120 diesel generators, 360 megawatts, no environmental studies till permitting. I could go on, but you guys know, and it's been said, is that what you really want for a charming town like we have? I mean, playing devil's advocate, we need to understand that this rezoning is just not for 400 acres. It's gonna encompass over 1,000 acres if it gets put into place in the Patterson Farm area and the adjacent roads. Really, how much can really be developed anymore when this monstrosity of a complex is just gobbling away natural resources at the level that Tract is wanting? During the June Work Session, Tract representatives continue to patronize us by stating that the USCPA, the NCDQ, Duke Power, they're all looking out for our best interest. We thought Iredale County Board of Commissioners were, we thought that the Mooresville Planning Board was, but yet, here we are today. The lack of transparency by the applicant and the representatives to date is unacceptable. How they have gotten this far with this project is a joke. I urge each of you to please think about the charm, the town, the people. The Patterson Farm community is a rural residential area, and we are thriving. Homes are being built, families are coming in, it's doing great. Wealth and power are a destructive combination if it's used recklessly and irresponsibly. There's only so much of this earth that can be gambled away until there's nothing left. Thank you for your time, and I trust that you will make the right decisions for the greater good of the future to preserve the last sliver of agriculture land in Mooresville, North Carolina.
Thanks, Renee, appreciate it. Is Scarlett here? She's not, Scarlett's not here, okay. I hadn't seen her yet, so. Steve Broi. There he is. Hey, Steve. Thank you, my friend, and you have three minutes. And you should be nice as well.
Well, to change the topic.
That's not me either.
I'm here about the Mooresville Spinners. They just won their sixth championship in 12 years, four out of the last five years. And numerous losses in championship games. We took them, I thought I turned it off. You know, we took them out of Moore Park, where they were averaging 400 to 500 people a game. They got to high school, got 100 people a game, you know? It's a small business trying to make a couple bucks. He dealt with it, all right? But the stories I've heard about another league and this and that, I've been looking into it, and the numbers are mind-boggling of what the league fees are, the yearly fees, the travel expenses. You know, I mean, what are the ticket prices gonna be? It was $7 a ticket. If they raise tickets to $10, $11, I'll go to Conapolis and watch the cannonballers, at least they're professionals. You know, you gotta get all your ducks in a row to make sure that you don't ruin a good thing. My granddaughters, they love to go to the game. My oldest granddaughter, she sings the National Anthem there many times. The little one, my nine-year-old granddaughter, she sings the Seventh inning Stretch all the time. You know, it's a great family atmosphere, and I'm just afraid we're gonna lose that if you bring in different teams or that doesn't wanna do what the spinners are doing, say, games- games in between innings for the kids, the adults, the whole nine yards. I just hope and pray that we can work something out with the Spinners and keep them here because I don't think there's any team around that can say they've won six championships in 12 years and four out of the last five. All right?
Yeah, ma'am. Thank you, sir, I appreciate you. It is interesting, there's nothing about Steve's accent that makes you think he knows who Andy Griffith is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mergan? Mergan? Oh, I'm sorry, I appreciate it. Thank you again for coming. And thanks for your conwords earlier, we appreciate it.
H.A. Mergan, 9621 Archer Road, also over 20 years as a resident here. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I'd also like to thank you for allowing us to attend the work session on the Patterson Farm Project. An abnormal growth that invades, disrupts, and harms a healthy ecosystem. That's my impression of this project, that's what I took away from that work session. That's also the definition of cancer. The workshop answered some of my questions, but it also left many unanswered. First, do I trust these people? No. Mr. Williams choked on his words through his entire speech. He knew he was misleading us. Do I want to enter a long-term relationship with these people? No. Have they proven that we have the community natural resources for this project? No. Let's talk about water. This project is going to consume 500,000 gallons a day. That's 6 to 9% of what our community uses every day. I remember the droughts not too many years ago, and I remember forced usage restrictions. I don't see how we can support this great demand. And remember, there is no off switch on this project, even in a drought, it needs the water every day. Let's talk about power. We were assured, they told us, Duke can supply the 360 megawatts. It's not a problem. In just the past 10 days, we've all received messages from the power company saying, hey, please don't run your big appliances, don't run your air conditioning because it could bring down the grid. How can they supply another 360 megawatts when they can't supply the demand today? Again, there is no off switch. Even in a power demand, that data center is still pulling its megawatts. Let's talk about generators. We were told the generator will only run 30 minutes a month. That's great. Then one of you asked the right question. How many generators are there? 120. And as you've already heard, that's, if they run Monday through Friday, that's two and a half to three hours a day, every day of the week. What happened to our 30 minutes? And we haven't even brought up the question of the quarter million gallons of diesel fuel that's going to be stored on site. What are the provisions there to store it, to secure it, or to even handle a spillage? Let's talk about sound. 40 decibels of industrial waste noise, continuous, 24/7/365, is not the same as 40 decibels of crickets and wildlife. That's what we have today. Then there's the money for the schools. Using a candy bar analogy and their estimates, if you bought a $5 candy bar to support the school system, only 1.8 cents of your $5 would go to the school. That doesn't seem right. This project is a cancer, does not fit this community, and it is not welcome. You need to have all the details in writing from these people before you can even consider moving forward with a decision. They must be held to specifics to protect your interests and all of our interests. Finally, this is a question of legacy, and I need to get this out. You can be remembered for allowing this cancer into our community, or you can be remembered for listening to the community and removing the cancer. Finally, I would like to say something to Mrs. Earnhardt, and I hope she does hear this. She's worked very hard to protect and preserve Dale's legacy. I respect that, I admire it, and I appreciate it. Dale was a hero of mine. Does she want to preserve Dale's legacy and wildlife heritage, as the Dale Earnhardt Foundation would suggest, or does she want to allow Dale's legacy to be a cancer on the community and the environment? This land is Dale's legacy, make no mistake about it. She can turn it into a positive, or she can turn it into a cancer. I believe we all know what Dale would want his legacy to be.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick, good seeing you.
Patrick Wright, 113 Gable Road, Mooresville. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff, and fellow citizens. Why am I running for Mayor of Mooresville? When I filed, there was only one other person that had filed, and that person isn't necessarily a bad choice. I believe that Chris and I share many of the same views. I believe that the citizens need to have a choice, they should have more than one box to check. Less choices make for voter apathy, which in itself is a real threat to our republic. I have no illusions as to the probable winner in this race. Chris has the political background, the experience, and the necessary funding. It may also be that the citizens of Mooresville would rather see a gentleman from the South as their mayor, other than an aging former wannabe hippie biker from California. Although I may not have any political background, I do have experience managing a rather large crew of angry teen steer truck drivers, dock workers, and office staff. I know how to work with others to uncover root causes, and when issues arise and find real-time solutions when needed. I do understand and promote healthy discourse and discussion with the need for a strong and robust working environment built on trust and respect. Retaining personnel and promoting within, if and when possible, is essential to a positive growth for any operational and management structure. I may not know the inner workings of the city government, but I am a common sense guy and a quick study. With the help of others and seeing how things are done and what needs to be done, we can all work together for the benefit of the citizens of Mooresville. This is not about me, it's about you. Once again, I still think of myself as the new guy. My wife and I absolutely love this town and the people within. I will always try to bring a positive mindset and do what I can to be of service to others. Now onto the topic of the proposed data center. As you know, in the past, I've expressed support for this project, but I have been doing more research and gathering information. There are many, many variables that will come into play. Most important to me is my belief in personal property rights, and having to condemn another person's property through eminent domain for something that may not yield a monetary or employment gain being suggested, that's not something I can endorse without more information. I also do not believe that they will have enough support this year based on the vote being so close to an election. And again, I would continue to stress the importance and the excellent job of Parks and Rec and the MDC that are doing for this community. Not sure how many of you went to the last few concerts at Liberty Park or any of the downtown events, but I can only say, wow, job well done. And again, remember to love your neighbor, be of service to others, and please volunteer if you can. Thank you for your time, and God bless America.
Hey, Patrick. Patrick, and I share the commitment, brother. I promise you, it'll be a clean race, man, you know that. Thank you, pal.
No dirt.
No dirt. Well, except for the California part. The Ellen Abercrombie. Ellen, thank you for coming tonight.
Ellen Abercrombie, 388 Patterson Farm Road. The red is the Earnhardt property, the black is my property. My home is 50 yards from the line of the Earnhardt property, so I feel very interested in what's going on here. I was dismayed to hear Tract's disclosure that the data center would use 120 diesel generators for backup energy. These generators must be tested on a frequent schedule to assure their ability to keep the center viable if the electricity needs can't be met by Duke Power. My research shows that potentially up to four hours per generator, and I've heard two different figures here already, each week, if you add that times 120 generators, says it's a lot of time that I'm going to be listening to generators, and as I found out, smelling fumes that may cause me to have thyroid cancer. Tract assured us that we can plant, place them behind the building to mute the noise. How can you hide 120 generators behind five or six buildings? It's not going to work. Research shows constant background noise like this has an impact on cognitive ability, and I don't need that at my age. When I visited the data center in Maiden, I observed that there were, there was only one home near the facility. It was abandoned. I was told that it was condemned. It was further away from the data center over there than mine is. Is that what will happen to my home? Will it be condemned and the others near the Tract site? We may not only just lose our property value, but we might lose our homes as well, and that makes me feel very insecure at my age. I visited the construction site of the 2,250-acre meta hub in Holly Springs, Louisiana. They're one year into the seven-year build. The site was congested with multitudes of trucks and equipment. Traffic was at a standstill. Dust was everywhere, blinding. Workers are being bused from towns 30 to 45 miles away, so there's no job for Holly Springs at all garnered for that. I don't think that we can allow this to happen in our area. This type of project is better suited to a more remote area where it will not be seen and heard, and I use that as something that you all brought up at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Richard Beck, 356 Riverbird Circle, Mooresville, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, staff, fellow citizens. Tonight, the Town Board has an opportunity to engage with the public in several very meaningful and profound ways. However, before the board does its thing, may I take the liberty of commenting on two diverse subjects? These are my recent comments about staffing and turnover in Mooresville and the data center project on Patterson Farm Road. I ask the board to bear with me as I walk through these subjects. My prior commentary about town employment and turnover has proven to be quite accurate. However, what is not accurate is all the assumptions as to why the turnover. Without details, some are retirements, some early, some at regular retirement time, some resignations being voluntary as the individuals did seek greener pastures, and some not voluntary but for cause. Yes, some out of frustration as to the progress the town was or was not making as they may have viewed it. Net result of the issues raised may be the town staff will be stronger in many aspects. We have to wait and see if that comes to fruition. My take is the town will be weaker in service to the public. Why is the town directing most inquiries to the town web portal? Many in the public have shared with me their frustration in doing business with the town. They are told to use the portal. Not everyone is as tech savvy as the town may wish them to be. If the Water Department wants a tech savvy clientele dealing with water bills and service, then why is the Water Department staff with four onsite service reps? Why must development proposals for planning and development be sent through the portal, and then the client waits days, sometimes weeks, for an answer? Same for the Police Department if one requests an accident report. How soon will one be required to use the portal to report an emergency or a fire? I cannot tell this board and those in attendance if the attrition rate for town the size of Mooresville is typical or not. Only town officials can address that, and I hope they do give the public a better response. Lastly, one can question if the town is following its own policies and procedures as it goes about making staffing changes. I already have the answer, the answer is no. Now, a quick comment about the proposed data center. With very, very little related historical memory remaining in the Planning and Development Department, how can this Town Board give any possible consideration for approving the proposed data center when, again, there is no, zero institutional memory with the Planning and Development Department to adequately consider the proposal as presented? Any discussion of this item by this board is an admission, is an admission, it is flying blind in all aspects, as no member of this board is deeply knowledgeable of the ins and outs of the UDO as it pertains to the subject. When is this board going to share with the public the complete transparent information as supposedly studied about this project? Will it be at the last minute before September 15th? A quick reminder, your town website defines transparency as being accountable to the public. It is all, in all aspects of government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. And I know we are really not supposed to comment, but I'm going to comment on one particular item, and that's the date. So essentially, the mayor has very few powers, as Commissioner DeWes often tells the public when they tell him they're going to tattle to him, to me. He reminds them that I break ties, run meetings, and sign documents they approve. So, but, one of the things we do is schedule this. So the September 15th, for those who, because if you listen to the comments on both sides, I had Kerry saying, you know, why are you waiting so long? And Chris going, why are you even here at all? You're not ready yet. So what I had to weigh out was, if it went to pass the election, how could anybody in this crowd not think that was politically motivated? Right? So that's why September 15th is the date, because I didn't want one of you going to a poll and making a vote not knowing how each of the board members felt about this issue, felt it was that important. So if you can be, want to be upset with somebody, be upset with me about that, but I felt like we, we owed you the ability to cast your vote, if this was the most important issue this year, with that being done. And if we had pushed it out past the election, not only would it smell bad and look bad, it would be bad, right? So that's why we did that, so to protect the fact that you have the right to know the information before you go to a poll. Does that make some sense? Now, whether it means we have all the information or not, doesn't, doesn't mean that we have it, but we certainly thought that it would, we wanted to make sure you had at least that piece of it before. And again, just because of schedule doesn't mean that it passes, right? Yeah. And with that, we're going to move on to opening the public meeting. We're going to call it to order, and with that, we're going to ask Commissioner Kerker for our invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us. We thank you for the time we have to come together this evening. Will we ask that your presence would continue to be with us in our decision-making process? Will we ask for your wisdom? We ask for your guidance? We ask for your discernment in our decision-making. Will we get it right every time? No. But Lord, we ask for your, your hand to be upon us. We thank you for the opportunity we have to serve. We thank you for all those who have come out to share their hearts, their thoughts, with us. Continue to guide us and direct us. What we say and what we do brings honor and glory to you, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Y'all standing, join us in the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are going to start first with, y'all want to, are y'all going to stay or do y'all want to go? We can give you a minute if you want to go. We'd love to have you stay, but you can go, it's okay. We'll start off with presentations. Occupational Safety and Health Association Safe, Sound, Week Proclamation. And Caitlin McKenzie, Risk Manager, to receive the proclamation. Caitlin, come up and join me.
We'll take a minute while I get out. For those of you who don't know, his mother said she was a lifeguard. So she, when you talk about long-term, she started off as she was, you want to see Charlotte? And then went on and came back to us, so she is truly a promoted from within person. OSHA Safe and Sound Week 2025 Proclamation. Whereas the town of Mooresville values a safe and healthy workplace, and whereas organizations with safer workplace enjoy increased productivity, higher employee satisfaction, and operational cost savings, and whereas the town of Mooresville aims to strengthen existing safety programs and highlight the importance of safety and health, both in the workplace and at home, and where Safe, Sound, Week...
Safe, Sound, Week is held across the nation each August and recognizes the successes of workplace, safety, and health programs. Now therefore be resolved that the Town of Mooresville Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim August 11th through the 17th, 2025, to be Safe, Sound, Week in the Town of Mooresville to promote a culture of safety and preparedness within our organization and the broader community. This the fourth day of August 2025. Mr. Tracy Jerome.
Thank you, Mayor. So we'd like to first celebrate new team members who have joined the team across the organization, which is very exciting to welcome all of our new, our new team players. We also have a couple of promotions and transfers. And then we have a number of anniversaries. We have Andy Poor, who has spent 20 years with us. We have 10 years with Dave Harding and Tony Newman. And then we have five-year anniversaries being celebrated, Marissa Houston and Amy Smith. So we're very happy to celebrate all of our team members that continue to serve and grow with the organization. We'd also like to celebrate, in our Finance Department, Deputy Finance Director Sandra Buck recently received the designation of Certified Fraud Examiner by the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners. This is an international group that really does a lot of training and does, it's a very high level of standard to make sure that we've got, those that complete this training. It's another level of financial management, again, to ensure that our public funds are being cared for, we're promoting transparency, and we're making sure that we're really compounding, combating fraud activities, both internally and externally. So we're very, very proud of Sandra with this latest achievement. So bravo. We'd also like to celebrate our Deputy Fire Marshal Jeffrey Sickles, who recently received the prestigious designation of Certified Fire Investigation Instructor by the National Association of Fire Investigators International. Again, more training, more development to make both our individual team members better, really make the organization better so that we can provide exceptional service to our community. And then we're also very happy to be recognizing and welcoming five new members of Mooresville Fire and Rescue. They graduated on the 21st of July, Malcolm Forbes, William Shamblyn, Jacob Burkhaw, Ross Stewart, and Paul Carson. Again, we just did the proclamation for OSHA Safe and Sound Week. There is going to be an event on the 12th of August at the Charles Mack Center. All of members of public, you're all welcome to come and join, meet team members, and learn more about a variety of safety aspects for day-to-day living, both in your home, in your workplace, and around the community. And I will hand it over now to Chief Camperchani to talk about back-to-school safety for drivers.
Thank you. So it's back-to-school time again, right? So just a few bullet points here. Please be aware of speed zones and obey them. Look out for children walking or biking to school. Stop for school buses. Never pass a school bus displaying a red light and be careful when visibility is low, especially in raining conditions. I can tell you that you've all seen the things on the news, horrific things with people speeding past school buses and stuff. And I can tell you this, there will be no tolerance for that here in this town. It's just very, very dangerous. And we've all seen what happens when things do that. So we're going to be out there, traffic guys, follow buses around. We're going to be doing that a lot, at least for the first month of school, if not, if not beyond that. So it's just, you know, it's just a very dangerous situation. And our car seat check, you know, I say this all the time, it's really important. In fact, we just hosted a three-day event at our police department last week. Representatives from Lake Stateville Fire were there and other people from all around the area, and putting these car seats in. And, you know, as somebody who had twin daughters, it's not easy. I get it, right? So don't, don't think you can just throw these things in. Sometimes they are difficult. So please, if you're going to have a child or grandchild, aunt, or niece, whatever, please come to one of our things and let our guys put them in for you. Thank you.
All right. Rock the Park Festival this past weekend was the mashup event that we spoke about before. Mr. Wright, thank you for mentioning that. The Experience and Engagement Team does a fantastic job of working with all the departments and putting that together, and the MDC Downtown Commission. So I won't read every single bullet point, but you can see over 10,000 people in attendance. Social media reach, over 469,000 in that reach there. And the owners down there said it was some of their higher sales than any other typical Saturday. So big shout out to the Experience and Engagement Team for not only this event, but all the events they put on for the community. What's going on with Experience and Engagement? More upcoming events. September 5th, a new tropical-style band. And then our big event, September 13th, Bands, Brews, and Barbecue with Night Ranger and Jefferson Starship. You can expect Bands, Brews, and Barbecue just to be like the mashup that you saw this past weekend. So suggest you get there early. The weather hopefully will be a lot better all day long. But those are two upcoming events next month, the month of September. Going to just give some numbers going back throughout the summer. As Chief Camperchani said, you know, the kids are going back to school, but we just want to recap the great things that we've done throughout the summer. So our public library had our summer reading. Two, 168 programs were held across both branches, and we engaged over 5,000 attendees, and over 1.5 million minutes were read by everyone of all ages, children, teens, and adults. So thank you to our library folks who always do great things, but go on the extra step during the summertime to ensure that the kids, teens, and adults were all engaged in the summer months. Andy Poor, saw, Manager Jerome said he just reached his 20 years. Well, him and Ms. Sarah were highlighted in the July issue of Lakeside Living. I don't feel like I need to talk about Andy Poor. I feel like everybody knows who Andy is, but Andy is that person, I promise you. Anything you ask, he will tell you the history, as he is our local historian, but he can tell you any and everything. There's times that I hear stuff and I just walk over there, ask Andy. No need to even look, I don't need to look at Google. I just Google Andy and talk to him. But congratulations to Andy and Sarah for this fantastic feature in the Lakeside Living. Parks and Recreation, few things, different areas. Mooresville Golf Club features, many videos will be used by visiting Mooresville to promote events and tournaments. Say it all the time, one of the nicest, the nicest municipal golf course you'll ever see. Recreation Division hosted a food drive over at Selma Burke. 425 food items, over 500 pounds, all donated to Feed and See. And Summer Camp, Week Six Specialty Camps offered some great opportunities for campers, tie dye, wild wonders, and mad scientists. Fantastic Parks and Recreation Team on Friday. Close up the summer camp program, all to have Monday and Tuesday off and start after school on Wednesday. So no rest for the weary, but this is what we do. And so excited that the kids are going back to school. Thank you, teachers, but we will get them soon as they're done, right after school. With that, I'll pass it to Ryan.
Thank you, Sharisha. I've got two slides here pertaining to transportation. The first one here is more regional-based, and the second one's going to be locally-based. As you can see here, as the baby steps that we are continuing on with the multi-year NC-150 improvement, they are starting the new bridge construction. So expect delays there around the interstate at I-77. And if nothing else you read on this page, please just allow extra time as you use the 150 corridor over the next couple of years so that you'll get there safely to your destinations. Next slide, please. And then here on the 115 side of town, I want to make sure that everybody was aware that East Center Avenue is now closed between Church and Maple. And yes, that is correct, that second sentence where it says it's going to be closed for about four months. And the reason for that is, in the second paragraph there, we are replacing the culvert on East Center Avenue. So that's going to be quite the hole as we replace that culvert, and we just ask for your patience as you have to endure that detour for the short time. Next slide. And then finally, we do have a stormwater survey that we've posted. It's going to be up through the end of September. And as you can see there in several of the photos, we've really decided to focus on how we can go and touch different parts of the public. So we're really looking for ways that we can continue to do this, and we'd just love for you to share any insight or input on those ways with us and see if it's something that we can implement to make our program even touch more of the public than we can. So with that, Angela Jerome, I conclude the manager's report.
Thank you. And now we'll ask the town attorney, Ms. Sharon, to please talk to us about the scope of municipality authority.
Thank you, Ms. Jerome. Just wanted to take a moment to talk about the scope of municipal authority in North Carolina. Municipalities are generally granted authority from the state, and states are often referred to either as home rule or as Dillon's Rule states. In home rule states, municipalities have broad powers to make their own rules. In Dillon's Rule states, municipalities only exercise powers that are either expressly granted, that are implied, or that are essential to their purpose. And North Carolina is not either one of these. And grants of authority are interpreted more narrowly than in Dillon's Rule states. And in North Carolina, cities and towns only exercise powers that are expressly granted by the state legislature. There's no inherent authority to act. And that authority is granted through state statutes or local bills. For example, the town charter establishes authority for the town to act in certain areas. And ultimately, the state legislature controls whether the state, the county, or a municipality has authority over a service or a governmental function. For example, counties have exclusive responsibility for social services and for public school funding. And ultimately, the legislature determines through state statute what the town can or can't do. For example, the town cannot charge impact development fees without explicit legislation that would allow that.
Awesome. To me? If you would, I'm going to take a quick minute because I think the board had certainly had this question raised, and so to show that we actually are always listening, I think it's important that a question had come up about some of the employment. So I went back and asked to get the numbers so we could share with you, as Paul Harvey said, the other side of the story, right? And this is what it looks like. So retirements, we had 13. Put in perspective, in 2022, we had 13. '23, we had 10. '24, we had 12. We're currently up to six so far this year. Okay? It's about the normal number, especially since so many of our people are, have been with us for a long time as we've grown. So it's now that it's coming time they retire. Terminations, five. Of those terminations, one is a fantastic pedophile sitting in jail. I think that's a good thing, don't you? Under the voluntary side, the biggest ones are PD and Fire, they're our biggest agencies. So they each have about 130 people, okay? And under those, under PD, we do an outgoing, eight or for better pay. Now you see why when we redid our budget, we put in a lot of pay towards our first responders, right? Because it's important to keep them. So obviously, we went after that. And again, we certainly have a couple of bad actors in there that aren't with us anymore either, as our town attorney is sitting here in a panic, and I'm going to say more than I'm supposed to. But let's just say, pulling tags of good-looking girls is not a good way to be a police officer, okay? You don't get to work here if you do that stuff. And our Fire, and our police chief is demanding by saying he will not tolerate it, and I thank you for that. Set a standard and don't back down. I don't care what anybody says. Under Fire, the biggest reason why Fire was leaving out of the ones who left was because they wanted to have a separation allowance or the insurance after they retired, because you have to remember, when a fireman retires, usually they're 52 to 55. They got several years before they hit Medicare, right? Just the math. So it's a big deal, especially we wear those poor guys out, jumping on and off those trucks, hips, knees, stuff like that. And so that, we're instituting that starting in January, and I think the Fire Chief will tell you that's a huge deal, isn't it, chief? Huge deal. Not to put you on the spot, but it's something they fought for for years. So essentially, those are the kind of things, and that was where the majority left. So we absolutely did look at where we were losing some of our personnel and try to change the benefits to match that. Specifically, everybody got short-term and long-term disability. You know what it's like to be a person and not have 30 days of a paycheck, right? And we've already had two people who it's changed their lives just in the last, since we passed it. So these are the type of things that we try to figure out what to do, okay? When you go down, it's two here, my friend called the golf course. Those of you who know, I like to play golf. Nobody's changed the golf course, but I saw like five, there are the maintenance guys working on a cart entry level. One guy, they said, couldn't show up on time. After about 15 mornings, it's time for him to find a new job, you know, stuff like that. And then lastly, 11 departments had one person. So when you pull that apart, there is a lot of things that caused this. I will tell you, we do have some bad actors, because we're an organization of several hundred people, and we do get rid of those people. Let's just say, the way Mooresville works is if you are told that you're being looked at, you have the opportunity to resign, we can't stop that, that's the way the law works. And so some of them choose to get out because what they've done, maybe they use their employee card to buy some personal clothing or something. We can't tolerate that, y'all. So those people have to go. And lastly, we've lost some good people. We really have. And if you ask them, they will tell you, the manager, myself, commissioners, we go to them and ask them, please, please don't go. What can we do to keep you, right? Go ask a John Young, how many of us made a phone call to him to say, John, we love you, please don't go? You know, what can we do? So they do get, they do get very much told how much we appreciate them. And sometimes they just get a great opportunity. And shame on us for not appreciating it when somebody gets a really great opportunity. We have one employee who got a job with a local group that paid him more and gave him free tuition as a university for all those kids. How do we offset free tuition to a private school, right? We just can't do it, you know? We are public, you've got to be responsible with your money, you know? $80,000 tuition, we can't cover that. So anyway, as we pull those numbers apart, there's so much more. I would encourage any of you, ever have a question, unlike some of the people out there who like to take half the chapters and run with it, I appreciate you, sir. One of our sisters came in and said, hey, Chris, why don't you give me the other half of the story? And we had this conversation. I'll tell you, the ones who want to do it, they're just trying to sensationalize it, and that's all they want to do. If you want to talk about the different bad actors, we can have those conversations, right? But we are not going to have people who misuse your trust and let them keep a job for the Town of Mooresville, okay? And I'm going to tie it up with that. And with that, we're going to have our adjustments to the agenda. Under 7I, consider requests from the Finance and Fleet Department to adopt an ordinance to amend the budget by appropriating funds from the General Capital Investment Fund and the Fleet Fund to create the Heavy Equipment Project Fund and to adopt four corresponding capital project ordinances for the purchase of a fire apparatus. 7K, consider requests from the Finance Department to adopt a resolution approving an installment financing contract and a deed of trust and delivery thereof and providing for certain other related matters. We're going to add 7S, consider requests from the Clerk's Office to approve the regular session minutes from June 2nd, June 16th, and July 7th. And under regular agenda, we're going to update 8E, consider requests from the Planning and Community Development to adopt an orange for a volunteer annexation, utility extension request AX 2025-05 for 1.16 acre site at 1316 Mecklenburg Highway. And update 8G, consider requests from the Planning and Community Development Department to adopt an orange approving text amendment TA 2025-05, amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, to create a use and definition for a cat cafe. Updated, anyway, UDO. Under the regular agenda, we're going to move item 8I to 8AI, 8A1, consider requests by the Experience and Engagement Department to approve the first reading of the ordinance to permanently expand the boundaries of the downtown Mooresville Social District, and ordinance to temporarily expand the boundaries of the downtown Mooresville Social District on September 13th, 2025, from 4 to 9, for the Bands, Brews, and Barbecue Festival. For those who don't know, that's going to be Night Ranger. You should come, it's going to be a great time. And then move 8A to 8A2, consider requests from the Planning Department, Water Resource Department to adopt an ordinance approving the annexation boundary agreement between the Town of Mooresville and the Town of Troutman. Update 8H, consider requests from the Planning and Community Development Department to approve resolution scheduling public carings for land use items. And under closed session, consult with Attorney GS 1433181183, we're going to add Town of Mooresville versus Land Tree Development Company and TAC Stafford LLC versus Town of Mooresville. With that, have approval of the adjustments to the agenda, the consent agenda, and the regular agenda as presented.
So move, Mayor.
Commissioner West. Commissioner West, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Mr. Dingler, it's a first by Commissioner West and a second by Commissioner Dingler. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay. Ms. Christine, consider requests by the Experience Engagement Department to approve the first reading of the ordinance to permanently expand the boundaries of the downtown Mooresville Social District and an ordinance to temporarily expand the boundaries of the downtown Mooresville Social District on September 13, 2025, from 4:00 to 9:00 for the Bands, Brews, and Barbecue Festival. Ms. Christine Patterson.
Good evening. I'm Christine Patterson, Director of Experience and Engagement, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide some additional information on the social district expansion. This evening, I will give an overview of the downtown Mooresville Social District expansion that will address participation challenges and boundary conflicts. And these efforts support our strategic priority area of safety and community well-being for all and the strategic plan goal of exploring and executing inclusive events to connect communities. Just a quick overview of social districts and their purpose. So in 2021, the North Carolina General Assembly passed Session Law 2021-150, allowing cities to create one or more social districts. The original law was passed in 2021. There were updates to the law in 2022 that provided a few additional expansions and clarification. And essentially, that law was intended to be a tool for municipalities to, at the request of lawmakers, to set up and self-regulate social districts that met the needs of each individual community. The purpose of a social district is to regulate the possession and consumption of open containers of alcohol in designated areas, and they can benefit downtown areas and support small businesses by boosting economic activity, encouraging foot traffic, attracting new businesses, and improving the overall experience of guests and residents. Those that can participate in a social district are permities, customers that are purchasing the alcohol, and non-permittive businesses that don't sell alcohol but choose to allow it on premises. The law allows cities and counties to establish social districts by ordinance, boundary signage, days and hours of operation, and public safety must be clearly defined, and a map and management plan must be submitted to the ABC Commission. Alcohol can be carried and consumed in designated non-glass containers. They can't be more than 16 ounces. They must have the social district logo, the permities logo, and they have to say, drink responsibly, B21. And customers must dispose of those drinks before exiting the social district. Non-permittive businesses do not have to participate. They're not required. If they are participating, they just have to make sure they display that official signage and that, and that they allow law enforcement access to their business. And they must post signs on exits that do not open to the social district. Special event permits can overlap with social districts, wine, beer, and liquor. Vendors can sell with proper permits during those events, and those events must notify law enforcement if they occurred during those drinking hours. So this is the current map of our downtown social district, which was officially created on June 6 in 2021. Now, it covers the block of Broad Street from Moore to Center, and then Main Street from Iredelle McClelland, and then goes to the boundary of Church Street. Now, the current boundary for the social district does present some enforcement challenges related to monitoring and compliance. Businesses that are located outside the municipal service district are currently excluded from participating in events. The current boundaries do not align with a typical footprint of an event that's held downtown. And then most Main Street businesses holding social district permits are unable to participate in events in Liberty Park because of those boundary limitations. And really, the social district was put in place to support small businesses. We want to make sure that they can take advantage of those opportunities and can participate in events. To help address those issues that I just outlined, we are requesting the approval of an ordinance to expand the social district to Church Street to the Mill One businesses. Now, this would allow those businesses to participate in the everyday social district. Now, this is the first reading of the ordinance with official adoption being September 2nd. Additionally, we're requesting approval of the ordinance to extend the social district boundary to include Liberty Park and create a temporary social district for the Bands, Brews, and Barbecue Festival on September 13 from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. Now, again, this would address those boundary issues and would allow alcohol from the social district to be consumed in the park just for those event hours. And that, of course, would be managed and enforced through signage, barricades, and assistance from the Mooresville Police Department on the day of the event. And then moving forward, we will bring a schedule of events to the board for the year, at the beginning of the year, to approve any temporary social district requests. Any questions from the board?
Question from the board? Commissioner DeWes.
Yeah, I would just like to ask a couple of questions to help clarify for the citizens in, especially like with the temporary one going into Liberty Park. I know there's some concerns and actually going both ways. Some people like to have the drinks everywhere and all that. But the whole issue there is to provide an opportunity during those events to have that. And most of those areas are closed down, but the playground is not. And this is going to exclude the playground from being able to have people travel in there with their drinks and all like that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Thank you for asking. We'll actually have additional barriers to prevent people with alcohol entering the playground, signage, of course, and assistance from MPD as well.
And so this just kind of makes it much more fluid over kind of typically kind of what would happen at an event like that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Qualls?
Thanks, Christine. I think you gave us some examples on Wednesday of, you know, the situation now that if there's such a Saturday night, you know, we had the food truck events, the social district, somebody could, you know, whether they wanted to get a beer on tap, and if they wanted to come down into Liberty Park, they had to, you know, either finish their beer, throw it away or whatever, and then come into Liberty Park where there they could buy a beer from a different vendor. That will eliminate this?
Correct.
Like the thing during special events for Liberty Park, right?
Correct. Yes, as special events only will create that temporary social district at Liberty Park, and that will eliminate that enforcement issue and overall guest experience as well.
Right. And then just a question for Chief Campuchini. You know, we've had the social district, obviously, since 2021. Any feedback from our officers, you know, obviously we have the newer ones, when I still say new, downtown. Any feedback on issues or anything of social?
No, there's been no issues. It's been really smooth. It's been really good. And our only concern on all of that has been no glass, right? Glass causes the biggest problem. But other than that, nothing at all.
Thank you. That's all.
Chief, I'll tell you, your staff did awesome Saturday night. Really did. They did a great job. Really, really proud of them. Any other questions? Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment and just to kind of echo, as the event wound down, I did check with our officers, and it was a great event. They did an awesome job, and the citizens of Mooresville behaved. We really didn't have any problems. So kudos to you, Christine, and your staff for putting that on. I know it was a lot. Kudos to MDC for helping with that. It was a great event, and we had plenty of support from police and Fire, so all in all, great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
And with that, can I get a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to permanently expand the boundaries of the downtown Mooresville Social District and an ordinance to temporarily expand the boundaries of the downtown Mooresville Social District on September 13, 2025, from 4:00 to 9:00 for the Bands, Brews, Barbecue, and Festival?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Qualls? Motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? Mr. Avon? There's a motion by Commissioner Qualls. There's a second by Commissioner Avon. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right. With that, also, Ms. Christine, please enjoy the birthday with your son, okay? Sorry that you had to wait for that. Next, consider a question on the Planning and Department, Water Resource Department, to adopt an ordinance approving the annexation boundary agreement between the town of Mooresville and the town of Troutman. Ms. Allison Kraft.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. So primarily for the benefit of those in the room...
Oh, we have to open the public hearing. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I knew I would forget that part. So, so as I was saying, the town of Mooresville has, and has had for a number of years, an annexation agreement with the town of Troutman. Primarily, that's just to make sure that as both municipalities continue to grow over time, that we don't run into a situation where there's town of Mooresville Incorporated areas north of town of Troutman Incorporated areas, to make sure that there's a very even, well-understood demarcation line between where the two municipalities exist. And, and that has sat fairly untouched for a long period of time because that line was pretty far away from either one of our municipal boundaries. As the area continues to grow, we are looking at that a little bit more closely based on the growth patterns that each municipality is, is occurring. And the reason that I am here presenting this as opposed to planning is because typically that growth is really dependent on utility availability and sewer availability. And so we are looking at that agreement with Troutman, and Troutman actually requested that we make some amendments to it because their ability to serve folks south of their area is much easier than our ability to serve north. And that really has everything to do with topography. That's a different basin that flows to the north, and so our wastewater plant is on the southern side of town. So transferring that flow from those locations down to our plant is much more costly for us than it is for them to be able to serve. So they did request that we review that annexation boundary line, and as I said, a lot of it had to do with differences in our utility accessibility. And specifically, Iredelle Statesville Schools has got a spot on Parker Town Road for a new middle school, and Troutman is much better poised to be able to serve that site than the town of Mooresville is. So if you recall, back in February, Troutman gave, provided a request to us to take these three areas, areas one, two, and three, within their service area. That dark brown or that black line is our current annexation boundary, and that purple pinkish line is what they had been requested. And we reviewed those areas, and the town had no issue with transferring those areas to them for the ability to annex into Troutman as opposed to Mooresville for a variety of reasons, most of which are service delivery items. We did go back to Troutman and say, we would like to do this one time and not continue to look at this as things come up. And so we asked them to go back and double-check, make sure that what they were requesting was what they were going to need long-term, and they, they came back. And this is when that conversation about the school came up. And, and they requested this, you see here up there, and then further to the south in that red star is the Parker Town Road school site. As we reviewed this, we felt a little uncomfortable with the area directly south of Parker Town Road being in Troutman, again, for a number of reasons. That's a large tract of land that is very close to our service area and, and in fact, in some spots contiguous to town of Mooresville municipal limits. And so, and this is the map that was provided by Troutman as part of the annexation agreement, so it's, it looks a little bit different. So we kind of met in the middle and drew that line on Parker Town Road, and this is the final line that is before you this evening. And I'll just back up one more time here. So just the pink is the areas that are changing. The, the black to the west of that is the same annexation boundary that has been in place for a number of years. And so this evening, we are requesting that you consider adopting an ordinance to approve the annexation boundary agreement between the town of Mooresville and the town of Troutman. The town attorney and Troutman's attorneys have gone back and forth to verify that all meets and bounds descriptions are accurate in that agreement to match that map so that we don't have any concerns with a property being split in two or an actual neighborhood being split so that we've got that line as dialed in as we can. And with that, I will answer any questions that the board might have.
Question from the board? I appreciate, it sounds like we used engineering instead of just political lines, so I appreciate you using some common sense here. Anybody else have any questions? No? For that, we have no one who signed up from the public, so we have no public comment. And so with that, we're gonna go and close the public hearing if anybody has any more questions. And is there a motion from the board?
Mayor, I'll make that motion. Make a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the annexation boundary agreement between the town of Mooresville and the town of Troutman.
Commissioner West with a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Commissioner Dingler. So a motion by Commissioner West and a second by Commissioner Dingler. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Next, AP, consider requests on the Planning Community Development Department to adopt an ordinance for conditional rezoning request CZ 2025-12 for 9.88 acre site located Oats Road, also known as Overhill Storage. With that, we're gonna open a public hearing and recognize James Coley.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce this motion to you this evening, or this case for you, conditional zoning 2025-12. This is going from community commercial to conditional community commercial. Would allow for mini warehousing units and small retail warehouse units. The strategic priority area is gonna be individual and community economic vitality. Then we'll align with the strategic plan goal to assist sustainable business growth by leveraging local strengths and identifying new market opportunities for expansion. As an overview, the applicant is Boatland Development. This is located on Overhill Drive and Oats Road, 9.8 acres, and would be in Boating Ward Two. This is the current site photos. It's currently a community commercial, a part of Talbert Park, and includes auto repair, RV parking, and warehousing. There is no single-family residential within the area. Highlighted conditions, the straightaway drive at the south will be extended up. The 16 flex units would be warehousing that align with straightaway drive, and the interior units would be used for mini warehousing units. There was a neighborhood meeting on June 4. It was attended by the applicant and planning staff, and there has been no public comment to the planning staff or to the owners since. This does meet all of the map amendment standards, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Question from the board?
The applicant is also here.
Anybody have a question for staff? No? Okay. Thank you. And I think the applicant's here, but they don't have a presentation. So does anybody have a question that they have for the applicant? If you can have him come up and answer a question? No? Okay. Could the applicant come up? We're gonna have you confirm the conditions.
Mr. Mayor, Board, William Boat.
Mr. Boat, I just want to confirm on the record, on page 199 and 200 of the agenda, there's a list of 16 conditions. I just want to confirm that you're agreeable to those conditions.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, William is for storage units and not for track with his sticker. All right. Thank you, brother. Appreciate you. Anybody, we don't have anybody sign up for public comment? Any other questions from the board? No? With that, we're gonna go and close the public hearing and call for motion.
I'll make that motion, Mayor. I'll make a motion that the town board approves CZ 2025-12 because the proposal is consistent with the town's One Mooresville Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, the proposal is compatible with the proposed future employment center character of the One Mooresville Comprehensive Plan is adjacent to other light industrial uses to the north. The proposal is reasonable and in the public interest because this proposal is located within Talbert Park, a well-established business park.
Motion by Commissioner DeWes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Come on, Commissioner Avon. Is there discussion on the motion? First by Commissioner DeWes, second by Commissioner Avon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, great. Next, consider a question on the Planning Community Development Department to adopt an ordinance for rezoning request RZ 2025-03 for a 4.07 acre site located at Connector Road. And with that, we're gonna open the public hearing. Again, recognize James Coley.
Thank you again.
Thank you again. Rezoning from residential light limited service to hybrid light industrial to allow for by right use. The applicant does intend to develop an industrial warehouses. And the applicant voluntarily delayed this request in order to facilitate wideaway acquisition, excuse me, for the future DOT flyover. The strategic priority area is individual and community economic vitality. And the strategic plan goal is to assist sustainable business growth by leveraging local strengths and identifying new market opportunities for expansion. As an overview, this is from Connector Road, William Boat with Victory Lane Development, Inc. The owner is Carolyn Ketchy. The site is 4.07 acres. It would be in voting Ward Two if it were annexed. For context, the site is located between Connector Road and Statesville Highway near NGK Ceramics. And Connector Road was built to facilitate the economic development and freight movement from future exit 38 to the business parks along Mazepa Road. The site is zoned residential limited service currently with industrial uses to the north, the west, and on the other side of Statesville Highway to the east. The permitted by right uses would allow for warehouse and wholesale operations. This is just an example of where that proposed future rightaway would be. And then also the location of the flyover further to the south. All of the map amendment standards have been met. And the applicant does have a couple of slides.
And just to remind you all that this land is the same zoning request, that's the adjacent land as well, it would just all be the same. Is there any questions for staff before we go to the applicant? The applicant doesn't have a slides. We don't have the slides for the applicant.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have a question for the applicant? We'll have them come up if you have a question for them specifically. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Last chance. Question for staff before we close the public hearing? Oh, public hearing is closed. And with that, is there a motion? Let's statement of reasonableness.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Avon?
I make a motion that the town board approve RZ 2025-03 because the proposal is consistent with the town's One Mooresville Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, the proposal is compatible with the proposed future employment center character area of the One Mooresville Comprehensive Plan and is adjacent to other light industrial uses to the north. The proposal is reasonable and in the public interest because this road extension will facilitate economic development and freight movement from future exit 38 to the business parks along Mazepa Road.
Motion by Commissioner Avon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeWes. Any discussion on that motion? First by Commissioner Avon, second by Commissioner DeWes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, item 8D. Considered request from the planning community development department to adopt an ordinance for voluntary annexation request AX 2025-10 for 4.07 acre site. Get on Connector Road. This is just the annexation of the same project we just heard for rezoning. And with that, we're going to open the public hearing. And recognize Mr. James Coley.
Thank you. So as an overview, again, this is on Connector Road. The applicant is William Boat and Victory Lane Development. The owner is Carolyn Ketchy. It is 4.07 acres. It would be in Ward Two if it were annexed. This is in the tier one, identified as tier one in the growth map. Water is available and sewer could be brought in from the south at the owner's expense. There are no capacity issues. The project area is within the five-mile coverage area and is located within four-minute response time from station number four. Police and Public Works have no issues with servicing the property. And the site does meet the statutory requirements for voluntary annexation.
Question from the board. Question from the board? On my application, on my applicant presentation, there's no public comment? So before we close the public hearing, last chance. Any questions? No? Close the public hearing. Call for a motion.
I'll make that one as well. Just make a motion to approve the voluntary annexation ordinance and utility extension request for AX 2025-10 Connector Road.
Motion by Commissioner Avon, second by Commissioner DeWes with a thumbs up. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is item 8E. Considered question from the planning community development department to adopt an ordinance for a voluntary annexation utility extension request AX 2025-05 for 1.16 acre site at 1316 Mecklenburg Highway. And with that, we're going to open the public hearing. And recognize Ms. Veronica Bateson.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Veronica Bateson, and I am a planner too. Tonight, I will be presenting AX 2025-05 for 1316 Mecklenburg Highway. The request is to annex into the town of Mooresville for water due to a well failure. The property is currently within the town's ETJ. This aligns with the strategic priority area of future-ready infrastructure for thoughtful growth by supporting the strategic plan goal of approaching projects with an emphasis on interdisciplinary coordination. The owners are Art and Louz Baraza. The location is 1316 Mecklenburg Highway. The site is 1.16 acres, and if annexed, would be in voting Ward One. This annexation type is voluntary and contiguous. The site is currently zoned traditional neighborhood or TN and contains one single-family dwelling. Water, sewer are available with no capacity issues, and this site is within the tier one of the town's growth map. Fire has stated that this project is within the five-mile coverage area, and station five is within the four-minute response time. Police and Public Works have also stated that this property can be serviced, and planning found that this site maintains the character of the existing properties within the area. Staff has found that this site meets all the statutory requirements for voluntary annexation. And are there any questions?
Questions from the board? Okay. And there is no public comment? The applicant has not signed up to speak. Again, this is an emergency hookup for a well that's gone bad. With that, we're going to wait and close the public hearing. And can I have a motion?
Make the motion, Mayor.
Commissioner Dingler?
Make a motion to approve a voluntary annexation ordinance and utility extension request for AX-2025-05 1316 Mecklenburg Highway.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second, Commissioner Keriker. Any discussion on the motion? So he winked first, I'm sorry. I think that was a second. If it was something different, I apologize. You did want the second, didn't you? I thought you did. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just trying to keep the trains going up here sometimes, y'all. Sometimes it's thumbs, it's winks, it's nods, you never know which one it is. All right, next, 8F. Considered question from the planning community development department to adopt an ordinance for annexation requests AX 2025-07 for a 4.697 acre site located at 754 Oak Ridge Farm Highway. With that, we're going to open the public hearing. And recognize Ms. Veronica Bateson. Veronica?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for case AX 2025-07, the annexation of 754 Oak Ridge Farm Highway. This is a voluntary annexation for public utilities. It aligns with the strategic priority area of individual and community economic vitality by supporting the strategic plan goal of development of housing, employment, and educational choices to support economic sustainability. The owners are All About U Holdings LLC. The applicant is Mylan Two. It is located at 754 Oak Ridge Farm Highway. The site is 4.697 acres and is currently within Mooresville's ETJ. And if voted, would be in voting, or if annexed, would be in voting Ward Two. The site is currently zoned hybrid light industrial. This site falls within the tier one growth map with water and sewer available with no capacity issues. This project is within the five-mile coverage area for fire and the four-minute response time for station six. Police and Public Works have both stated that this property can be serviced. These are the list of 55 by right uses within that HLI district, and small retail sales and services is within that. There are a few development challenges for this property. There is a town sewer line easement, a stream buffer on the right-hand side, and it also resides within the WS2 balance of watershed, restricting the site to 30% impervious coverage with our high-density option or 12% impervious coverage with our low-density option. So here you will see a concept plan that has been submitted. Staff has also spoken with the engineer on this project, and they have provided a second site plan, as you will see on your screen now, that shows the driveway off of Selma Drive. NC DOT will have the final say on whether they prefer the site to have access via a right-in, right-out on Highway 150 or via Selma Drive. Staff has found that this site meets the statutory requirements for voluntary annexation. The applicant is here today, and I am happy to take any questions from the board.
Questions from the board? Do remind everybody, I think they're taking the 12% option, wasn't that correct?
I have spoken with the engineer. They will be doing the 30% option and putting in a SCM, so a stormwater retention pond that you can see on your screen. It is that gray circle behind the buildings that have been proposed.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Commissioner Quals?
Just a comment to Veronica and the applicant. I appreciate them going back to look at the alternative for the entrance on Selma. And certainly, we do understand that DOT reserves the right to approve one of those, or maybe both.
Noted.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, it's the rail, Duke Power, DOT. God's in there somewhere. Anybody else have any other questions? Does the applicant care to come up? Do they have anything they have to agree to? No? Okay. Nothing from the applicant either? Okay. Last chance. Question from the board? Oh, Commissioner DeWes?
Just a quick question. With the DOT, if we approve this tonight and DOT says no to Selma only 150, then that means we've approved the connection with 150. Is that correct?
No, tonight's request is for an annexation for utilities. Because it is a by right, they do have the ability to build this using well and septic. However, they are requesting town utilities and therefore must be annexed in. So the concept plan is not being approved tonight. It was provided for greater context because the applicant is one step ahead in the process.
May I ask a question? But if it weren't the Selma connection, it would be a right-in, right-out off of 150?
At this point in time, yes. This plan's, this concept plan has not been approved by staff. It was submitted for details for tonight's meeting.
Got you. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. As far as I understand, right, so this is an annexation?
Correct.
So we can't condition a site plan?
Correct.
Based on annexation?
Correct.
I know, I have a concern over the overhead bridge and the Selma intersection. This is, it's a dangerous one. We all know this. And that is my big concern. So our options are, you know, we approve the by right annexation, assuming that, you know, they will look into this, at least the Selma piece. I understand NC DOT as well. But that is my big concern. The other, the other options are ultimately, do a conditional rezone and then an annexation, correct?
If the applicant would like to come in for conditional zoning for utilities, that would be their choice. However, this is zoned HLI, so if they choose to instead put in a well and septic, they could still choose either site plan by right.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners? Any other questions? And I think we're talking about an acre-ish in construction, right? And what it was between parking, everything was a little bit more an acre.
Correct. It's 4.6 times .3, 1.2.
Commissioner DeWes has done the math for us once before. Yeah, it's about 1.2. Any other questions? Okay, with that, we're going to close the public hearing. And at this time, ask for a motion.
I'll make it. I'm going to make a motion to approve the voluntary annexation ordinance and utility extension request for AX 2025-07 754 Oak Ridge Farm Highway.
First by Commissioner Avon, second? Second by Commissioner Quals? Is there a discussion on the motion? Commissioner West?
Yeah, man. This is probably fine. I still have that safety concern. I know how dangerous that intersection is. I guess my preference would be I'd rather see you come back with a conditional rezone, but that's me.
Commissioner Quals?
So if it comes back conditional rezoning, the final decision of the driveway is still the NC DOT. So we, it doesn't matter what we condition for driveway permit. And this is probably the, probably the lowest trip count use as opposed to if they wanted to put a drive-through coffee shop or anything like that. So it's, you know, it's going to have, hopefully, a lot of customers for the businesses to do well, but the lowest use for traffic count. So we're kind of stuck with whatever they're going to do. We did have conversation at our last TAC meeting with NC DOT, our transportation meeting with them, that this still continues to be an intersection that we need improvement on. We've had seven different projects that we've seen that were to bring the traffic light. Those projects didn't come forward. So it does continue to be one that we'll push on DOT for a traffic light there.
Commissioner Dingler?
But if I recall during the conditional use process, we would have the entrance for us that where DOT would want the entrance during that process. Does this in any way hinder the future of that intersection? Because this is one of the worst intersections in town. And I agree with Commissioner West on the fact that a conditional site plan would guide us through that process. I just hate for us to get really extremely close to this intersection, and whatever the improvements are and why hasn't been done, I have no idea. But this is, this is a hot mess right here, as you would say. Just my thoughts.
Obviously, I think their willingness to go out the side entrance is obviously going to be taken by DOT. I mean, that's just the better movement. So I agree with Commissioner Quals that I appreciate the fact that they've been able to get to that place. Obviously, DOT doesn't want a driveway cut on 150 when they can get one on a side road, so.
Any other questions from the board? So we have a motion by Commissioner Avon and a second by Commissioner Quals. Is any more discussion on the motion? That, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So that's four posse and two ayes? I'm not going to lie, I split for a second. The motion fails. A four to two vote. Do we need to, do anything else? With that, can I have a motion to deny this at this time?
Mayor, I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to deny the voluntary annexation ordinance and utility extension request for AX 2025-07 754 Oak Ridge Farm Highway.
Motion made to deny by Commissioner West. Is there a second to deny?
Mr. Keriker.
Mr. Keriker with a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Dingler?
And as we said before, you know, you know, what's it look like? You know, I'd just like to see a concept plan, or not a concept, but something as part of the condition. I think the project's fine, but I would like the input from DOT to know exactly what we're dealing with because at the end of the day, we don't approve many like this. And just, just to have an understanding of that intersection would be great.
Commissioner Dingler, anybody else? Mr. West?
Just the same thing, I mean, being able to formally make the ask based on a concept plan for that rezone, at least I know I've done my diligence and everything I could to help keep that intersection safe because we don't know when that light's coming.
Mr. Kierker?
I agree with Mr. Dingler, it's the unknown of this. I think, and I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but I think that the Catholic Church owns that, or the Catholic Diocese owns that property right across and that they're gonna utilize that church facility as a campus. And that's gonna put a lot of traffic right there. I mean, Mr. Qualls, you think about what you live close to with the Catholic Church now. If they use this as a satellite of some kind, that could put a lot of traffic there, just better understanding what that intersection's gonna look like would help me a lot.
Any other discussion? So all in favor of the motion to deny? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the motion to deny, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, four to two for deny. Next, item AG, the reason we all came tonight. Consider our request, the planning community development department to adopt an order to approve text amendment TA twenty twenty-five zero five, amendment to unified development ordinance, UDO, to create a use and definition for cat cafe. With that, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. And recognize Ms. Veronica Bateson.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I will be presenting TA twenty twenty-five dash zero five, a text amendment for a cat cafe. This text amendment is to create a new use and definition for cat cafes by supporting the strategic priority area of individual and community economic vitality through the strategic plan goal of assisting sustainable business growth by leveraging local strengths and identifying new market opportunities for expansion. The applicants are Amy Doughton and Ronnie LaBarbara of Cat About Town. The topic is a cat cafe and the purpose is to create a use and definition for a cat cafe. Highlighted changes, the unified development ordinance does not currently have an applicable use for cat cafes. If adopted, the definition of a cat cafe would become a business establishment where patrons may interact with adoptable or resident cats in a designated lounge area while consuming food and/or beverages prepared in a separate compliant food service area. Currently, they are unallowed to do so due to a lack of regulations. The applicant's proposal is to allow for cat cafes through by right zoning. Staff proposal is to allow for cat cafes through by right and conditional zoning. The applicant has proposed by right zoning in the zoning districts listed above. Their option includes an amendment to the use table as described above, a corresponding use definition, and a robust set of use standards that have been included in your packet for consideration. Option two, staff has proposed a simplified version of the applicant's proposal. This version includes an update to the use table and a use definition. This proposal eliminates a few of the use standards, so we went with A through C and eliminated the rest, but adds conditional zoning to districts that do not allow for by right animal shelters and by right restaurants, which would be the most applicable use to a cat cafe. On June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, planning board unanimously voted to approve the staff simplified text amendment to add a new use and definition for cat cafes to the unified development ordinance. Planning board also recommended that cat cafes be allowed by right in traditional downtown or TD zoning districts. On July thirtieth, the mayor and board of commissioners, those that sit before me, requested that an additional option of conditional zoning for the proposed use be provided in the proposed zoning districts. The action tonight is option one, which is the applicant proposed text amendment. Option two, the staff simplified text amendment. Option three, the planning board recommended text amendment. Or option four, any further modified of options one through three. Are there any questions? And the applicant is also here with a short presentation.
Questions from the board? And we did hear her say, lack of regulation, that is not something you often hear in government, huh? Alright, with that, the applicant is here?
Yes.
Last, any questions for staff? Okay, applicant, if you would like to come speak.
Set my timer so I don't go too long. So first of all, thank you very much for, for hearing us out today. We're asking for the planning, for you all to approve the planning board recommendation of option number three, which would give us by right permission to open up a cat cafe. We're specifically very much interested in the downtown area. What we've learned as we have gone through this process is that people don't know what a cat cafe is or don't understand it and don't understand the regulations that North Carolina as a state has put onto cat cafes. So we wanted to talk a little bit tonight about what a cat cafe is, why we feel it would benefit the town of Mooresville, and then also to specifically address the questions that were brought up in the meeting that this town, the board commissioners had to prepare for, for this meeting tonight. So as Veronica said, the purpose of this amendment is to establish a clear legal definition. It supports animal welfare and adoption efforts to promote small business development as well as tourism to the area and also to reflect the modern community and urban values that we have today. One of the questions that we come across all the time is exactly what is a cat cafe? So in a cat cafe, we have a separate lounge where guests can interact with adoptable cats. They don't have to. So the front part of the lounge is really a separate area where people can come in, grab a cup of coffee, sit down, get on the internet, whatever they choose to do. And then the other area is a separate area where guests can go in. Cats are sourced through licensed rescues, so this isn't a case of us running around and taking cats that just walk in off the door. So they are actually come through licensed rescues, which means they've been vaccinated, they've been spayed or neutered and so forth. As you can see on the left, there are multiple cat cafes in the state of North Carolina. We went ahead and listed a few of those that are relatively close to us. Asheville, all the way to, all the way to the Raleigh area in North Carolina. So what we're asking for is not new, different, or weird, this is actually becoming a very popular type of destination. We put a couple pictures here so that you can kind of visualize what that cat cafe is. You'll see as well that there's a double door entry. So again, we don't want somebody to open up a door and cats to run out onto the street. So there's actually a double door entry for you to be able to get into that separate area. There is an admittance fee to the cat visitation area and that admittance fee is paid by individual and it grants them a certain amount of time to go into, into that cat lounge area. The reason for that is we have a limited number of visitors that you want to come in to see the cats. And it also gives us a safe place for the cat to be able to retreat if they kinda need to get away from all the people. One of the common misconceptions is that a cat cafe is a kennel or a boarding facility and that is not true. Boarding by legal definition means that you house animals that are owned by others for a fee. Cat cafes house rescue-owned cats only. There are no drop-offs, there's no public boarding. So if somebody went away on vacation, we're not taking their cat for two weeks, that's not the purpose of a cat cafe. The other misconception that people have is that there are no regulations, there are no regulations in the town of Mooresville over that. But the state of North Carolina does regulate cat cafes. The, and there's, and I've put the, the regulation up there on the board. So we have to provide things like clean food and water. There has to be a separate climate control and ventilation area. And there's obviously multiple hygiene reasons for that. There are certain processes that we have to go through to keep the, the cat lounge clean, including obviously litter boxes, everybody's favorite. And there has to be resting spots for the cats and we have to provide for their enrichment and their care. There are inspections also that, that we have to, to come in. So there's several operational compliance guidelines that we have to follow. One of those is the separate cafe and cat lounge area. The second is that we have to partner with registered rescues. The third is that there's no boarding, no breeding, no drop-offs. The fourth has to do with capacity, so we can only have one cat per eight to eleven square feet. So again, we're not talking a hundred cats within a hundred square feet, but this is regulated by the state. There are also food safety codes that we have to meet. So for example, we can't have a fully functional kitchen in the cafe. We can bring food in that's been prepackaged by others, but we can't have a fully functional eating area, so to speak. So that's part of meeting those food safety codes. And then again, we talked about those separate ventilation areas, so it has to be cleaned and ventilated. I can talk all day about the community benefits. For any of you who have been to a cat cafe, I'm sure you can speak to them and we've got a couple of speakers that are with us tonight. But it's a family-friendly attraction. It provides education on animal welfare, it's a very peaceful environment. It increases cat adoptions. With the rescues, rescues right now are struggling with adoption. And we've got several rescues in the area, including in Mooresville, that are about to go under because they are, they don't have enough volunteers, they don't have enough money, but they have way too many cats. And so this really helps to increase that cat adoption. It also provides a meeting place for certain events within the community. And we intend to set ours up so that there's a little bit of a co-working space as well. So if people wanted to have meetings in the cafe, they could do so. Just a little bit about national cat cafe growth, there's over a hundred and fifty cafes as of twenty twenty-four. This has doubled since twenty eighteen. And again, we talked about those adoption rates, we see between thirty and fifty percent higher adoption rates. When you have a cat cafe, people can go in and spend some time with the cats. So it's a proven nationwide success. One of the things that I found interesting in the preparing this presentation is there's actual websites now that are set up so that if you are traveling, you can use those websites to actually find a cat cafe to go and visit. So obviously, one of the things that town of Mooresville is trying to do as they are working to revitalize downtown is to bring more visitors to downtown. And so this is actually a very proven, proven model. They become destinations because they're unique experiences. We host different events, so we'd love to talk to your event planners. It's very social media friendly, there's nothing like a cute cat on Instagram and it appeals to a very broad range of, of audiences. There's social and economic impact as well, so the more small businesses, we create jobs because we're gonna have to have people work in the cat cafe. We talked before about not being able to have a kitchen, so it gives us the opportunity to have partnerships with local businesses as well as enhancing Mooresville, Mooresville's identity. I'm gonna hop ahead, oh no, I've still got seven minutes and thirty-seven seconds for those of you who are timing me, so I don't have to hop ahead. But we'd like to see, obviously, Mooresville lead in the Lake Norman region. We've got cat cafes in Charlotte, Asheville, Raleigh, Concord, Salisbury, Belmont, but we don't have anything in Lake Norman. So this would give Mooresville the opportunity to be on the map, so to speak. And again, all of those different cat cafes are proven in, in adoptions and tourism. Now, on your meeting on July thirtieth, there were several concerns that were raised and so we wanted to address them right on. So does this open the door to insert any animal cafes here? Are we gonna have an iguana cafe? We're gonna have a snake cafe? Are we gonna have llamas come in that spit in your coffee? The answer to that, and we're gonna talk about in just a second, and then the second big question was, would it open the door to commercial oversaturation? You're gonna have a cat cafe on every corner. So does this open the door to insert any animal here type of cafes? The answer to that is no. These are a very specific use case and we're asking for specific language to be added. And again, we talked about the fact that this is regulated by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. This regulation is specific to cat cafes and it does not include any other animal cafes. So there's nothing in the law that would bring, that would allow for other animal cafes. The second question was, would it open the door to commercial oversaturation? The answer to that is, again, it's no. This is a unique business model. There are approximately a hundred and fifty cat cafes in the US, but it's not very replicable and it's not a high-volume business type. Usually, we see oversaturation with, with types of businesses that have a low barrier to entry, right? They're easy to start, they're cheap to run. You might see vape shops or chains or low-barrier types of businesses. Cat cafe is not that. There's gonna be a substantial amount of economic investment that we have to put into the cat cafe to do the build-out, again, to comply with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. So it's not necessarily easy to set up. So we're asking for a very narrow change. We're not asking to loosen zoning for all other types of businesses. It's a very proven business model. And what we have seen in all of these different areas is that these cat cafes remain a one-of-a-kind in each locality. We don't see an oversaturation of cat cafes or, like I said, one on every street corner, which I think was part of the concern. So this is a simple change that you all talked about, making it conditional, but it would have a big impact on us. It would be a very, a barrier to small business growth for us. Each location change, if we had to go to landlords and come back and ask for permission for each one, that's costly, it's time-consuming. It would be an unfair burden on the property owners of the places that we're, that we would like to rent from. So that would lead to maybe some more vacant spaces and fewer leasing opportunities because it would preclude us from opening a cat cafe in Mooresville if you all decided to go with conditional zoning. It's financially unsustainable for us if you all made that choice. It would delay our progress, it adds way too much startup risk, our investors are not willing to assume that type of risk. We find that it would be inconsistent and inequitable. Currently, your current zoning allows restaurants and bars, also allows animal shelters. So we're not that far off from it, it's just a little quirk in the way that the zoning is written. So our model, we feel is very, is much simpler, it's more controlled. But because of that language that's in there, we're just excluded right now, so that's why we're asking for that, for that change. Again, if one of the goals of the board of commission is to increase economic development and to revitalize downtown, this would block us from adding to that. Again, we see it would limit tourism growth and again, that, that economic development. So therefore, we put a little summary here, this is what your current zoning allows and this is what we're asking for. So your current zoning allows restaurants, bars, and animal shelters. We're just asking for a small cafe space with a limited number of supervised and adoptable cats. Right now, there's no conditional usage required for restaurants, cafes, or animal shelters. So we're requesting the same, by right approval specifically for cat cafes. Your current zoning allows for high-impact, high-traffic businesses. We're none of those, we're low-traffic in a very controlled environment and so we think that would be a benefit. There's no zoning updates that are needed for a traditional cafe, if somebody wanted to open a coffee shop, they could. So we're asking for a test, test, text update to include this as a hybrid business. Your current zoning prioritizes traditional commercial models, right, what we're all used to seeing. We realize that this is different, that this is not something that everybody is used to. We find, we think it's innovative, we think it's mission-driven and we think that it would encourage more businesses like us that are innovative and mission-driven because they would know that they would have a welcome here in the town of Mooresville. So with that, we are asking you to support what the planning board unanimously recommended, which is option three. It would allow by right zoning in the following areas, TD, CM, CC, and PD. We're especially interested, obviously, in the traditional downtown area. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Before you step away, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Qualls?
I appreciate you repeating my comments, does this open up the door?
I listened to the whole thing.
This is just that you're asking for cats, the next person behind you.
Yes, ma'am.
Something else.
So the pro, the challenge with that is they, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, I thought you were done.
No, thanks. My question for you is, are, are the cats, they stay overnight or they, they come in in the morning and leave at night?
No, in the cat cafe, the cats do stay overnight until they are adopted. But again, that overnight stay does not meet the legal terms of a kennel or a building facility because there's no money that's exchanging hands, which is the legal definition of a kennel or a facility, a boarding facility.
Okay, thank you.
And I actually laughed, I thought you were funny, I thought you were pretty funny, so.
Commissioner West?
Uh, yes, I know it's different than a kennel.
Yes, sir.
The one question, though, that still comes to mind is, what precautions do you take for the spread of feline leukemia?
Oh, that's a great question. We actually have, and during the planning commission, our vet actually attended and spoke in, in our, on our behalf, but she couldn't make it tonight. our vet actually attended and spoke in, in our, on our behalf, but she couldn't make it tonight. We actually partner with a vet who has to vet all of the animals before they're allowed into the cat cafe. All of our cats, all, all of the rescues, in order to be a certified rescue, have to provide a certain standard of medical care. That would include, obviously, deworming, which grows, but let's face it, it happens, right? But also, it includes the full litany of vaccination shots. So for example, a cat that doesn't have, has not had a rabies shot is legally not allowed in, oops, my timer, sorry, is not allowed in the cat cafe. They also have to go through all of their, their kitten shots. And there's a, as you probably are familiar, since you asked the question, there's a protocol on that every couple of weeks that they have to have certain shots to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have a, I have a couple of questions, actually. And then I'll have to ask staff whether or not my questions are actually okay. The first one is, how many square feet do you foresee the entire establishment would be? How much? And how much of the percentage of that would be the cat part? And, and how many square feet do you foresee that being?
No, it's a great question. And obviously, some of that's just going to be precluded by the space that we find. But typically, a cat cafe is anywhere between twelve hundred and two thousand square feet. Oh, and your second part was how much is, is which? So, so you want to have between eight hundred and a thousand square feet for the cat lounge itself. That, or I shouldn't, let me correct myself. For the cat area, that includes the cat lounge, but it also includes a separate area for litter boxes, food, and a place for the cats to retreat if they get overwhelmed.
So let's call it twelve hundred to two thousand square feet, of which fifty percent would be used for the, the housing.
Depending on, on what we find, exactly. So that also means that we can't have thirty cats in there, right?
That's where I'm getting to.
Yes, exactly, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Dingler?
Not so much a question. There ain't anybody on this board that's got more cats than I do. If you need some, let me know. But, you know, and I'm a little bit off since Wednesday, but just the business guy. It's not the fact of what you're asking for. What about the business beside you? You know, and just looking at if someone wanted to do this beside an epic chop house and what they're doing there versus, and I'm not saying they can't mingle. I'm just saying, how do we control that? So just blanking it, I don't know where we're at as a board, but I just don't see that. It needs to be a conditioned process. Let me tell you, I'm all about animals. You know, and rights and what to do with them and how to protect them. I just, I worry about what the neighbor is. I don't really worry about what you're trying to do. It's just, if you were doing it beside me, I'd like to have a little bit of a say. And I would look to my elected officials to, to at least listen to.
May, may I address that?
You're more than welcome to, dear.
So I think that's one of the reasons why the North Carolina Department of Agriculture requires these separate ventilation systems. So any type of, of smells or fur or whatever that could get into a ventilation system, it can't pass through buildings. Some of the other things that we have to abide by or we have to have impermeable surfaces everywhere in the cat lounge and that type of thing. So I think other businesses around us are very protected. The cat, cat lounge itself is usually in the back. So if I was going to the chop house, for example, which is very good, by the way, but if I was going there, even if I was passing by the front of the cat cafe, I wouldn't see cats in the window, for example, because typically, it's in, it's in the back of the, of the room.
And, and I, and I agree with technology and, you know, the fact of exhausting air and bringing fresh air in. But I still, in, in a downtown setting, that's what it is. We were talking about just a standalone building. I wouldn't have a problem with that. But it's just when you just blanking me with neighbor to neighbor in the shopping center aspect, that was just a little concerning, but, but just my thoughts.
Commissioner Duist?
I do agree with what you're, I do agree with.
Commissioner Duist?
Yeah, I, I applaud the concept. I really like the, the idea of it. The, the concern I have, and what I haven't heard strong speech about, is when we make something by right, we take all the voice away from the public. And I want to make sure that we're very on firm grounding, grounding before we tell people this is going to be by right. You will no longer have an opportunity to really push back. Just imagine if that four hundred acres was by right for a data center right now. We wouldn't be having any of this discussion. And so I just, I have a concern with moving forward with by right. And it kind of follows along with what Commissioner Dingler has said. That means the neighbors get no vote, they get no voice. Cat places coming in, it is. And they may hate cats. I don't know. But, but it's, it's, I just think that it's, it's not good business to take voices away from the public. And that's what by rights do.
I think, I understand the, the concern there. I think it's very similar to concern, for example, for someone maybe that's vegan, right? And maybe a steakhouse is going in next door. And so I think by making it by right, you really are preventing us from having this, this type of, of business in Mooresville. And obviously, that's, you know, a choice that the Board of Commissioners has to make. But I would say, based on the number of comments that you all have, I think this is something that the town of Mooresville is actively interested in. We have had many people who have, who have written into the town in support of this. So I, I would say that there are more supporters of this than perhaps not supporters.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. And with that, we're going to have, we have two who've signed up for public comment. First is Catherine Walters. Catherine? Hey Catherine, you have three minutes, okay?
Good evening, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. I am here to speak to encourage the board to agree to the proposal that would allow the by-right zoning for a cat cafe. I think it's a win for Mooresville. It's a business that can bring in a wide variety of visitors and their dollars to multiple local vendors in addition to doing good. For example, I was traveling on a recent vacation. We never actually planned on visiting the small town nearby, but had a few extra hours and with a quick Google search, discovered it had a cat cafe. When we visited the town that we weren't otherwise planning on seeing, the cafe brought us in, but then we walked around, we stayed, we shopped about three or four local stores, and then we stayed for lunch. The cat cafes I have visited, when I travel, I have seen bring communities together in a way that few other businesses do. For example, I've seen a construction worker pop in for some relaxation, grab a cup of coffee, and take a few minutes with a smile on his face, watching kittens play through the glass. Moms with young children sitting enjoying coffee while their children had, quote, "the best day ever," unquote. That was a, from a six-year-old. And a group of office workers chatting about how happy they were to get out of the office for a minute, grab coffee, and take time to visit with the cats for some team-building and wellness. There are very few business models that will get families into downtown and get workers out of offices. Most cat cafes I've visited also had steady activity calendars with things like cat and kitten yoga, book clubs, even speed dating and chess clubs. It brings people, families especially, into downtown. That helps your boutiques, your bookstores, and your restaurants. It's the exact kind of business that you want there. It also brings tourists. For our wedding just outside Asheville, I actually included a cat cafe among recommended activities. And multiple guests made a point to come down from their mountain rentals and their outdoor activities and go visit downtown for it. A business that can draw residents and tourists onto Main Street is a win for everyone. And I save the best for last. After the planning commission meeting, I heard some of the after-meeting small talk. Someone mentioned that their teenager was excited about a cat cafe and wanted to work there. There aren't many businesses in any genre that can make a teenager inspired to work and is also the kind of place that you want your kid to be working at. I did do a little research, and I, I heard some of the expressed concerns that there would be a concern about market saturation. But basic, from my understanding and extensive travel, it just doesn't seem to happen. The people that do it, do it for the betterment of their community. And I think we can all agree that any business that has a primary goal of making their community better rarely has that much of a massive profit margin to drive excessive competition. The evidence shows that a flood of cat cafes just doesn't seem to happen. The city of Charlotte had two cafes, but one closed. And now in the entire city of Charlotte, there is only one. New York City, recently ranked the cat-friendlyest city in the United States, has a total of eight in the entire greater metropolitan area. To that end, I would strongly encourage you not to make the zoning conditional. You're adding a burden of time and extra cost not required for a number of businesses that I'm sure would be less desirable tenants than a cat cafe, and adding a burden to entrepreneurs who are opening a business to try to make their town better. I remember at the planning board meeting that several members had no idea what a cat cafe was. It's an innovative coffee shop and cafe model that is relatively new, though it's been successful all over the world. And making the zoning conditional would require landlord not just to take on the challenge of an innovative business model, but then require that landlord to go through likely months of additional work.
Catherine, we appreciate it.
Yeah, sorry.
You're good. No, you did a great job. Got a lot in three minutes. Next, Ms. Bronwyn Martin?
Good evening.
Appreciate it. You have three minutes, okay?
All right. I'm Bronwyn Martin, and I've lived in the Mooresville area for approximately twenty-four years. And for most of that time, I have been a part of cat rescues. I've seen firsthand how difficult it is, in particular, to adopt out adult cats who don't do well in cages and PetSmart and that kind of things and showings. Cat cafes have been increasingly popular in our state, and yet we don't have one in the Lake Norman area. They offer a comfort place for drinks and coffee and snacks while adding a safe environment for potential adopters to get to know cats, where especially adult cats can sort of shine. And that's what drives adoptions, is seeing their personalities. Some facts about cat cafes. They exist in forty-seven states and DC. Twenty-twenty-four saw record growth with fifty-five new cafes opening nationwide. North Carolina has approximately eighteen. And the three McTabby ones, which are Concord, Charlotte, and Salisbury, have adopted out nineteen hundred cats in the last approximately eight years. More than seventy-five of these establishments, more than, sorry, more than seventy-five percent of these establishments are operated by nonprofits, small businesses, or a combination of the two. These businesses have become so common, they have enough to warrant their own regulations set by designated authorities. As is the case for most of these cafes, this one is a local-driven effort with limited money and resources. The petitioners are hard-working local women with full-time jobs who are still dedicated to make a difference for their communities and the cats. The additional requirements of conditional zoning would have significant and negative impacts on their efforts to lease buildings. Landlords often prefer the simplest route when choosing a tenant and would be unlikely to rent a business to someone who requires extra approval. I attended the local zoning meeting and was delighted when the Mooresville zoning board approved by-right zoning for the cafe. Their recognition of the unique charm and benefits that the proposed cafe would bring was very encouraging. We have an opportunity to set our town apart with Lake Norman's first-ever cat cafe. Please, don't squash this local effort with extra red tape, thereby killing something beneficial to the town, its residents, its visitors, and its homeless cats. It is a good thing.
Okay, with that, applicant gets a rebuttal for any of the negative things they heard from the presentations. Would you care to take a moment for that rebuttal? Five minutes.
You got to try, right? So I think, you know, again, I, when we were working through this, I think the cat cafes that you'll find, and I think the biggest, sorry, I can't remember who it was. I think it was you, Mr. Dingler. Concern was, you know, what do you do if there's a restaurant or something like that nearby? You all do have the opportunity to put something in there to give us by right, but to put some type of a caveat in there that says we can't be next to a full-scale dinner restaurant. And we would be okay with that. The problem with the conditional zoning for us is simply it makes the burden of entry into opening a business like this higher and a greater risk than we're able to sustain. And we'll have to go elsewhere, and we don't want to. What the town of Mooresville is doing in the revitalization in downtown is, is amazing. I mean, you drive through and you start to get excited about what's happening in the buildings and so forth. That's where we want to be. We want to be a part of this. And so if that is the main concern, then what I would urge is that you do a by right, but maybe do a caveat, do some type of a carve-out. I'm not sure what the proper planning term is for that, but maybe some type of a carve-out that says they can't be next to a restaurant that serves dinner, for example. We would be amenable to that if we did not have to have that other barrier of entry with conditional zoning where we have to work with a landlord and a special request has to be made and has to go for the town, and it can take months and so forth. That, that's just not sustainable for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Is there any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Dingler just has a comment. You're okay. I don't think we have any more questions.
Okay.
We've all sit through a lot of public hearings. But you know, at the end of the day, we just did a conditional use product. And since, other than we don't know the location and we didn't tell the neighbors. I mean, we've gone through the process, and we knew where it was at already in this process. The presentation is here. If you were downtown, what are you going to do? There's no traffic studies. There's nothing but here's the building. This is what the pictures look like, and we've already seen rough renders inside. We're just way ahead of game, in all honesty. Truthfully, we could have set up, you could have been through the conditional product, and we would have known where it is, and neighbors would have spoke out. They wouldn't, and this process would have been so much easier than blanking and it, and saying, hey, now it's my neighbor and I don't know. What there's an upstairs, what there's a downstairs, what there's a basement. I don't know what that building looks like. And I never gave anyone the voice to say, hey, you were supposed to protect me in this situation. That's my hurdle. But anyhow.
Appreciate it.
We, we've got the presentation. We just don't know where we're going with it.
That's okay. I'm going to move on. Veronica, can you come up? I'm going to ask, this may be unfair, so if it is, obviously, James can jump in too. So I guess that's the question of, is there a manner by which we can put enough things around it to make us comfortable with where we could go? Like, for example, limit the building to be no more than fifteen hundred square feet and no more than if it could be fifty percent used for the cat part? Could it be, to your point, within, can't be within so many feet of a this, 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 and this? So that from the dais is an impossible thing? So the question that I, I put to this board is, if you absolutely are dead-set on conditional use, then let's go ahead and make sure, let's go ahead and do that. If you think that there's a way to mold this enough, can we table it for our next meeting where we can have something that tackles a few of those questions? I think, because of Commissioner Dingler's point, and it was well-stated, the great thing about downtown is you know exactly what you have. There's very few things you're going to change, right? So the question then becomes, how do we protect a neighbor from this, you know, this Eddie wanted next to him? Maybe he says, that's the greatest thing ever. Put little suit jackets on him, and I'm, I have a whole other product, you know? But at some juncture, there's, 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 I think, we have to get comfortable that, again, a standalone building seems to be a little different than attached buildings. Would you guys like to take a, a jump at that? Or do you think conditional use is the only way you could ever be comfortable with it, and we could kind of go from there?
Commissioner Paulson?
Sure. And, and having adopted four cats, I'm all, all about making this work. I don't think that we have all enough details here to make a decision. That we want to make it work, but I think we, we need to flesh it out a little bit more to where it is user-friendly for the applicant that wants to bring this here. We would love to have this here, but we have to be respectful for, to Commissioner Dingler's point, the, the neighbors. So.
Commissioner Paulson, would you offer a table?
Yeah, I would make a motion to table this till the next meeting and let us put some more details into it to make it work.
Commissioner Dingler?
I keep, I keep turning this off, but I don't know if the applicant has an opinion. Because in my opinion tonight, this will pass with a conditional product.
Of course.
And you can get on the table and get on the agenda to move forward if you're willing. Or we can table it and wait a month and delay you more. So to me, and there may be, I just don't know what language we do. And we have beat horses to death since, trying to figure out how to make it work. And I'm all about it. If I need a location and the neighbors had the right to come out tonight and said, hey, I don't have issue or is crickets, I'm fine with it tonight. But I, but the thing is, we can put it on, we can, we can add it, which I think we probably would. Or we can table it for a month and then, and then hold up more time.
Amy, would you step forward for a second? I'm going to ask you. Yeah, I appreciate it, Commissioner Dingler. I think that's a good question for the applicant. So.
Yes. Yes, sir.
So to, to break this out for you, Commissioner Dingler's point is a valid one of, i-if you truly are going to try to come regardless, even though I understand you said you... if you truly are gonna try to come regardless, even though I understand you said you wouldn't, but you know, we all, we all sell a little bit when we're putting these things on. And I don't hold that against you, it's okay. He's saying you may be able to get here just quickly by doing the conditional use quicker than you think, especially seeing how you probably, you have the support of this board, right? The reason why I offered the other is because if you truly can't do that, then there's no harm to file the table, because we may be able to get enough things together where everybody gets comfortable, and at worst case, you're no worse off than you are right now. Because I'm just, you know, with this gray hair, I'm telling you, I'm getting a tone that we're probably not gonna pass tonight. So I don't want to see that happen if we have a chance to have something. And I've told you all before, I know my kids in Chapel Hill love the cat cafe. Again, not my thing, but my kids love it, therefore I love it, right? So the, I, I need to, I, I need to know which way you want to go with this. Do you want me to move forward trying to get a table for you? Or would you like to go ahead and withdraw and move to a conditional use? Or would you just like to roll the dice and see how the vote goes?
Would we have the opportunity to come back and change it at a later date? So in other words, let's say we start working with landlords and we find that it takes too long. My understanding is that the landlord is the person who has to make the application to the town. Maybe they don't want to go through that. If, if that process proves to be too onerous, would we have the opportunity to come back and do a buy, and request the by-right amendment?
You can?
I suggest maybe planning clarifying, because I think this text amendment is needed in order to move forward with a conditional plan.
That is correct.
Yes. If you decided to allow it, you have to.
We gotta pick a horse. We either gotta change it to where you can go ahead and go by right, or we gotta go ahead and change it so you can do conditional use. So the question becomes for you, we can do whichever you want tonight, the conditional use, or you can table for the by right? I got an idea. Let's just take two minutes. Let's all have a quick conversation.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take two-minute rate.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, for sure. Commissioner. All right. Just so to catch you all up, I had a conversation with planning as well. The difficulty of us going and doing something based on food or this is they actually have food. So how can you say you can't have food nearby when food's actually inside the particular place they have? So they said that realistically, we gotta kind of pick a horse here. And either we gotta say it's okay by right, or we have to go ahead and go with conditional use. Is that about where we came back to?
Correct.
So with that, I'll put back to you guys. You can go forward with your vote tonight, or we can not do that. We can go with the conditional use. We can help you get this thing moving quickly, right? Staff, everybody help you. We all seem to be on your team. Is that something we could go forward with? And worst-case scenario, you find a different place you want to put it. We'd hate that, but at least we can try to do our best on this end. Does that sound fair?
We would accept the conditional zoning. I want to make it very clear that we are not certain that that's going to work for us because of the burden on landlords, but I think that's, if that's the best we can do tonight, then we would very gratefully accept that.
And I think the landlord just has to sign off on it. I think you could come forward on their behalf, as long as they sign off on it. Is that correct? Yeah.
How long does that process typically take?
We will have a great conversation with you tomorrow in planning, and we will lay out a nice plan for you, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
With that, can I have a, oh, yes, Ms. Crawford.
We have a pending motion right now on the table.
But it does not have a second.
It does not, so.
Would you like to withdraw your table?
I would, I would withdraw that for a different motion.
Okay. And we're gonna do that, and at this one time, we're gonna close the public hearing, okay? And I will ask for a motion, I'm assuming.
Option D. Or four.
Option.
We have a new statement.
We do. Right. Sure. Commissioners, with the option, would you like to move forward with? I need a motion for one of them. Commissioner West, got his finger up first.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve TA 2025-05. Approving the simplified language as prepared by staff, the amendment is consistent.
Nope.
Option two, oh, where's the other one?
There's a new one.
Option four. Okay, strike that. I'll make a motion to approve TA 2025-05 by approving the language as amended during the agenda review, which has been marked as ordinance D in the presented materials. The amendment is consistent with the town's one was a plan. Specifically, the amendment provides flexibility to the town board to review cat cafes through a conditional rezoning proposal. Furthermore, the text amendment is reasonable and in the public interest as allowing the use conditionally ensures better compatibility with adjacent properties.
And he said ordinance D, just so you know. Ordinance D, as in dog.
Option four, ordinance D.
That's correct. As a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Commissioner Dingler, discussion on the motion.
Just a point of clarification.
Commissioner Claus?
Because I'm confused with the 14 options we got here. That the option D is indeed the option that requires conditional zoning for every different district.
Cat cafe.
Is that correct?
Is that correct?
Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner West?
Yeah, yeah, just, I know, and I know we have these updated ones, and I am aware of the amendment during the agenda review, because I'm the one that brought up the, the setting of a precedent for it. I didn't mean to spin into this big of a thing, because I love cats just like anybody else. I love cat cafes, and when Commissioner Duise's arm heals up, maybe we'll go do cat yoga together. But at the same point in time, we need to allow others to have input. Their voice needs to be there, and we need to make sure that that precedent isn't set. So that was kind of my intent behind this.
Commissioner.
Beautiful.
So we have a motion by Commissioner West, a second by Commissioner Dingler. Is there any other conversation on this motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Y'all, seriously, if, if, give us, get together with staff and give us a time, and we'll make time tomorrow and we'll get you on the right track, okay? Sound good? Okay. Next, item 8H, considered request from planning community development department to approve resolution scheduling public hearings for land use items. You don't know whether, okay. Mr. James Colley.
Thank you again. So we have two options for you guys tonight for moving forward on September 2nd with the Brumley Farms project. So the first option in front of you right now would be to remove that from the agenda and hear the rezoning for Ridge Avenue and rezoning for Alcove Road. That is a change of use for Ridge Avenue and then an emergency utility connection for Alcove. The second option would be to just hear the conditional rezoning for Brumley and push the annexation to October. September 15th, the option does not change. That is the Mooresville Technology Park.
Correct. Okay, so just so you know, on the scheduling, on the Brumley, the annexation, the rezoning, have two different things. The rezoning could go forward as is. It's the annexation that can't go forward on the September 2nd date. So obviously, the applicant would like us to hear the rezoning on September 2nd and hear the annexation at our next meeting that would allow the clerk and others to get their documentation together. It's obviously before y'all to make that decision. And then, obviously, the Patterson Farm, Mortal Tech Park on the 15th. Does anybody have any comments on, on these? Commissioner Claus?
Just kind of a clarification on that, just to help me to make sure I'm understanding. So what's on the screen, the, there, proposal is for the zoning for Oak Ridge Farm Highway on September 2nd and take the annexation and add it to September 15th?
It would be to move it to October. And, well, I guess we could, if you wanted to hear that on the 15th.
Yeah, the 2nd we could schedule for the 15th, but we could schedule for the first meeting in October. Kind of dependent upon where we are with the documents, the annexation.
We would just be splitting them up, which is how we used to do in the old days. We'd do them separately. We'd be doing it like we used to, hearing a rezoning and hearing an annexation differently.
We're just trying to figure out the dates of.
It will be completely up to us on the 2nd to decide whether we want the 15th or the, I think that adds a lot to do with whether or not everybody's signed off on the right parcel numbers. Cool. Commissioner Kicker?
I would just assume to have it all at one time. Do, I mean, if we, we don't have the annexation court together yet, I assume do them both together. Splitting up is not my preference.
Anybody else? So we will hear Oak Ridge Farm on October 2nd? Okay? I guess? That's gonna be the.
We'll just remove it from scheduling for tonight.
We'll do that one. And I go back to the Patterson Farm. I, I am down with anybody wanting to schedule this whenever, you know, I've obviously stated why I think it's important to not look like we're moving out past an election. Others, some think that, you know, that, there's no win here, whichever one we do. So I'm, I'm open to whichever one y'all decide you want to do. Anybody have anything they want to change with that, or you want to leave it the way it is? And again, I remind the thing. To prove it or to turn it down, you gotta hear it, right? We gotta hear it to do something with it, right? So.
We're not gonna lose sleep either way. Whichever way we do it, I'm just saying I like the fact. If it needs to come forward, bring it on forward. I mean, it's, I just think it, I just, you know, I just think from a, when you fill a room with audience, they have a right to see what all happens at one time versus here we're here tonight or here we're moving on again. Because really, if you, if you break up into points into another piece, you still had a right proposition, and they gotta come back.
Sure.
That's, that's on, I'm just trying to say.
You're talking about Brumley.
Yeah, I'm talking about Brumley.
Yeah, I'm, where are we moving on? We moved that to October. So you're good. It's okay.
Where y'all at?
Now, I'm on, I'm on the Patterson Farm. Do you all want to hear that the 15th, or do you want to hear it the first meeting in October? The mid-meeting in October? 2028, it does not matter to me, but we have to decide at time to hear this. And the poor people have been going to meetings and meetings. I feel like we just have to let them see a yes or no on this.
Well, the whole room seems September 15th.
I agree with you. As I try to remember, buddy, I don't get a vote, so I just want to make sure you guys have your right thing. Anybody good?
I think September 15th. Let's do it.
So we're going to accept the scheduling as is with the September 2nd Oak Ridge Farm being moved to October, first meeting in October. And with that, can I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Mr. West?
I make a motion to adopt the resolutions fixing the date of public hearings for the requests as presented.
Okay, I need a second. Commissioner Kicker with a second? Do you have any discussion on the motion, or anybody else have discussion on the motion?
I just have a comment.
Commissioner, Claus?
In regards to the Brumley Farms, I'm just gonna ask staff, I'd really like for you to give us a clear detail of why, why there's this disconnect that we're not able to certify the information. Was it a delay from the applicant? Is it internally that we have some, some gaps? What is the problem? What is the problem? Um, you know, we've seen, Brumley Farms has been around forever and, you know, they deserve their time to come, but we, we need to know what's, what's going on. So we'll look for an update, um, from the planning department, clerk and the legal office of what's, what's.
We can address it right now if you'd like to.
No, I'd, I'd like to have a detailed, when did we receive the information and that type of thing. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Some of y'all on my name? Oh, okay. Um. Then we have a motion made by Commissioner West and second by Commissioner Kicker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That's why I heard somebody call Chris from the back of the room, but. Is there any new business before this board that is burning from any one of y'all to?
No.
Then we are going to move into closed session. Under A, consult with attorney GS 14331811A3. We're going to add Town of Mooresville versus Lane Tree Development Company. Uh, also going to add TAC Stafford LLC versus Town of Mooresville. B, Economic Development, GS 14331811A4. C, Acquisition of Property, GS 14331811A5. And Personnel, GS 14331811A6. Can I motion going to closed session, Mr. K, uh, Mr. West?
So move, Mayor.
Mr. West with a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Mr. Dingler with a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Commissioner?
Mr. Attorney.
Mayor. In order to get Commissioner DeWese home and heal up in time for cat yoga, I make a motion we adjourn.
Mr. Commissioner, if you would say aye.
Aye.